Good evening and welcome to the October 2022 RTM meeting. My name is Alexis Vulgaris, RTM moderator. As all members have received a copy of the call for tonight's meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. Our October meeting is only a few weeks away from Veterans Day, and I would like to take a moment to thank all of the members of the RTM who have dedicated part of their lives to serve our country. While by no means a complete list, I would like to acknowledge some of the current members of the RTM who I've had the good fortune to work with. Bob McKnight, chairman of our Appointments Committee, and Kip Bergweger, chairman of our Legislative and Rules Committee, are both Vietnam veterans. Ed Lopez, a member of District Six, is currently a member of the Army National Guard. Two of my -- we'll clap for him. Two of my District Six colleagues, Brian Maher is a U.S. Army veteran, and Daniel Izzo is a trained Black Hawk helicopter pilot who is a veteran of the wars in Iraq and Afghanistan. And James Waters, who's a member of District Six. This evening, I've asked Mr. Waters to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, but before he leads us, I would just like to give you a bit of background regarding his past service history. Mr. Waters served in the United States Navy from 2006 to 2018, achieving the rank of Lieutenant Commander. During his service as a U.S. Navy SEAL platoon commander, he was assigned to SEAL Delivery Vehicle Team One and was awarded the Bronze Star Medal and Joint Service Commendation Medal with valor for leading his team in the successful execution of extremely sensitive and high-risk special operation missions critical to the national defense of the United States. Would everyone please rise and join Mr. Waters as he leads us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Waters, and thank you to all of our members on the RTM who have served our country. As all members have received a copy of the minutes from the September meeting, the reading of those minutes will be omitted. Are there any proposed changes to the minutes from our September meeting? Hearing none and absent objection, the minutes stand adopted by unanimous consent. We do have two announcements. I'd like to recognize IC France and Tara Restieri, please, who are going to tell us a little bit about a program that's being sponsored by the Greenwich United Way and Department of Human Services.
Good evening, RTM, and honored guests, and thank you, Madam Moderator. Tara Restieri and I are the co-founders of Better Tomorrow, and we would like to invite you to a very important event on Sunday, November 13 at 4:30 at Roger Sherman Baldwin Park. Better Tomorrow is the first community-wide vigil to increase awareness around mental health and addiction issues. Join us to connect, to honor, and to support. Who is coming? Health care providers from Fairfield County, members of our clergy, local not-for-profit, and various departments of the town of Greenwich, including the Department of Human Services, all ages, families, kids, men, women, those giving encouragement, and those needing encouragement.
As we all know, mental health issues have been on the rise for many years, and we're certainly exasperated by the pandemic. We have seen the statistics, we have felt the pain, and we are sure that there are few among us who have not been personally affected. We believe our community, the community of Greenwich, shows up. Our community cares. No one needs to be alone in their struggle. We believe we are stronger together. We're asking you to come and be inspired by our speakers. Come and light a candle for hope. There will be resources available onsite. In case of inclement weather, we will be meeting indoors at Arch Street, and following the event, we will be having hot chocolate and conversations. If you have any questions, we have actually made flyers, and we will be distributing these as well as a press release to our local papers with more information. We have many of our nonprofits working together with us and sponsoring this event. We think it's incredibly important that we're with each other, for each other, and that we are stronger together. I'm going to put the flyers on the back table so that as you leave, if you want to pick one up, and please, reach out to ICRI if you have any questions, if you have an organization that you think that we have forgotten about that should be participating, please, please reach out and let us know. Thank you.
Very much. If I could recognize Scott Kalb from District Seven, he is our representative observer, the RTM's observer on the retirement board, and I've asked him to provide us with an update on that board and what they're doing.
Good evening, everybody. Happy Halloween. That's all I wanted to know. I hope you'll all come to visit us on Park Avenue to get some treats on Halloween and to hang out with the kids. So, as the moderator just mentioned, I wanted to take a few minutes to inform you about the Greenwich Retirement Fund, which is a defined benefit pension plan the town manages on behalf of our police and fire men and women. I've been serving as an RTM observer at the retirement board meetings for the last three years, and given the current downturn in financial markets and the uptick in inflation, Moderator Vulgaris felt it would be a good time to provide RTM members with an update. The retirement plan currently is currently valued at about $600 million and is 82% funded. It's closed to new employees, who instead participate in a defined contribution 401K retirement plan. One reason it's important to follow the retirement fund is because it impacts our budget. In recent years, the town has contributed over $25 million per annum to the pension fund to maintain and improve the funding ratio and to avoid future payment shocks. The annual rate of contribution is affected by many factors, including investment returns as well as cost and price inflation, which I will talk about briefly. For the fiscal year ending in June 2022, the retirement fund investment return was down 57 basis points, or about 1/2 of 1%. This number is provisional because we don't yet have final figures for private investments, but it's estimated the final return will be in the neighborhood of minus 2 or maybe 2.5%. Wow, I didn't mean to turn everybody in the dark with those comments. Maybe somebody can hit the switch in the back there on the wall? Thank you. The returns for the pension fund were better than the benchmark and much higher than for the peer group. The average U.S. pension fund was down 10% for the fiscal year, and the average funding ratio dropped well below 80%. As a result, most U.S. pension funds will require significantly large contributions from their sponsors this year to remain in compliance. Note that the Greenwich Retirement Fund was up by 26.5% in the previous fiscal year ending in June 2021, which was way ahead of the benchmark in the peer group, so the shortfall this year was not completely unexpected. The main reason for the Greenwich Retirement Fund's outperformance was its overweight position in private equity, which was up by 42% for the fiscal year ending in June, and that compares with minus 11% for the S&amp;P 500 Composite Index and minus 8.5% for U.S. Treasuries during the same period. This private equity allocation helped protect the plan from volatility in the public markets. Given the recent increase in inflation, the retirement board approved a cost-of-living adjustment known as COLA at the maximum allowable rate of 3% for this year and 3% for the following year. This will decline gradually thereafter to the normal inflation adjustment rate of about 2.15%. The annual contribution for the town to the retirement fund is expected to rise by about $2 million this year, reaching approximately $28 to $29 million. The strong performance in fiscal year 2021 and the mild drawdown in fiscal year 2022 helped to moderate the increase in the funding contribution, but it's still going to go up. The retirement fund remains on track to reach a funding ratio of 90% by 2025 if it can achieve its expected average annual return of about 6% over the next three years. This is something that we will have to keep an eye on going forward, and it's not clear what our contributions rate will have to be as we move ahead. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about the retirement fund. You can find more information about the retirement board on the Greenwich Town website, including performance figures that go back all the way through the last five years, monthly. And the retirement board also generally meets on the last Thursday of each month, and meetings are open to the public, so feel free to stop by. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That brings us to the call for tonight's meeting. If there's someone in the back, somehow these very bright spotlights got turned on, and maybe you can turn those off so our retinas don't burn out completely. I notify the membership that I would recommend the following organization of our agenda based on the reports received. Those going on the consent calendar, items 3, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 12, 13, and 17. Two groups of combined calendars, Group Number One, items 1 and 2 for the purposes of postponing, and then Group Number Two, items 10 and 11, which are the two leases. And then, three items on the separate calendar, items 4, 14, and 15. Item 16 has been withdrawn. Thank you very much, Chief Heavey. That makes it better up here. Pursuant to our rules, I will designate items -- maybe a little too dark. Okay, good. Pursuant to our rules, I will designate items 3, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 12, 13, and 17 to our consent calendar, and if those items remain on our consent calendar, all you will hear is what I'm about to say. No committee reports and no discussion on the items. So here we go. Item number three is the appointment of Michael Bucino to become a regular member of the Board of Parks and Recreation for a term expiring June 30, 2025. Item five is the appointment of Emmanuel Demore to be appointed a regular member of the Julian Curtis School Building Committee. Item six is the appointment of Nishani Devi Nadu to become a regular member of the Julian Curtis School Building Committee. Item number seven is the appointment of Glenn Kaner to become an alternate member of the Labor Contracts Committee for a term expiring December 31, 2023. I'm sorry. Item number eight is the appointment of Adam Rothman to serve as a regular member of the Labor Contracts Committee for a term expiring December 31, 2023. Item number nine is to appropriate $13,000 to a capital account for Nathaniel Witherell for the chapel window replacements. Item 12 is to accept a gift of the restored Chimes Building from the Greenwich Point Conservancy. Item 13 is to accept a gift of a bird water garden from the Friends of Greenwich Point. And item 17 is an appropriation of $271,000 to be added to account A217-51100 for costs associated with the school safety and security programs. Are there any objections to those items being designated on the consent calendar? Hearing none, will the district tabulators please mark your voting cards, consent calendar items 3, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 12, 13, and 17, and proceed to poll your delegation? Okay, we're going to keep moving along. We're now going to take up our combined calendar. I'm recommending two groups of items for our combined calendar. Group one is for the two items, items 1 and 2, where the candidates were unable to meet with all of the standing committees and will need to be postponed. And then, the second group consists of items 10 and 11, which are the two leases that we're taking up this evening. In order to combine items, we need to have a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a motion to suspend the rules to combine for voting purposes? Okay. It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules and combine for voting purposes the items in Group One. The motion to suspend the rules is not debatable and requires a 2/3 majority to pass. Is there any objection to suspending the rules to combine for voting purposes the items in Group One? Hearing none, that motion has been adopted upon unanimous consent to suspend the rules. While we're at it, let's just take care of organizing the second group of combined items, Group Two. Is there a motion to suspend the rules to combine those items for voting purposes? It has been moved and seconded to combine items 10 and 11 to combine for voting purposes for Group Number Two. Once again, the motion to suspend the rules is not debatable and requires a 2/3 majority to pass. Is there any objection to suspending the rules for that group of items? Hearing none, the motion to suspend the rules is adopted upon unanimous consent. Okay, so we are going to begin with the first group of combined calendar items, which are the two nominations that Mr. McKnight is going to bring forward right now. Bob McKnight, chairman of our Appointments Committee.
At the Appointments Committee meeting on October 18, 2022, Bill Ingraham, call item number one, did not attend for his interview for the Harbor Management Commission. Stephanie Johnson, call item number two, did not attend for her interview for the Board of Ethics. At this time, I call for both to be postponed to the December meeting.
Mr. McKnight, may you just read first the resolution for number one so we can get it before us, and then you can make your motion to postpone it?
Number one, resolved. The named person nominated by Board of Selectmen be appointed a regular member of the Harbor Management Commission, R4, for a term expiring March 31, 2025. William Bill Ingraham.
Thank you very much. May a member move the adoption of the resolution? Did I hear a second? The resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. Now, Mr. McKnight, you may offer your motion to postpone if that's what you choose to do.
Should I give Stephanie's?
We'll do them. Yeah, you can do them together if you want. Read the resolution for item number two as well, then.
Right. Item number two, resolved. The following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a regular member of the Board of Ethics, R4, for a term expiring June 30, 2025. Stephanie Johnson.
Thank you. May a member move the adoption of that resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. Now, Mr. McKnight, if you'd like to postpone them.
At the Appointments meeting, October 18, Bill Ingraham, call item number one, did not attend for his interview for the Harbor Management Commission. Stephanie Johnson, call item number two, also did not attend for her interview for the Board of Ethics. At this time, I call for both to be postponed to the December meeting.
Great, thank you. The motion to postpone is procedural and, as such, can be adopted upon unanimous consent. Is there anyone that objects to postponing items 1 and 2 until our December meeting? Hearing none, the motion to postpone items 1 and 2 on combined calendar Group One has passed by unanimous consent. That brings us to our second group of combined calendar items, item number 10. May we have the resolution for the Boys and Girls Club? And I believe it's Mr. Ben Branyan who's going to be introducing that, and I think, Jenny, he's online.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This is Ben Branyan, Town Administrator, Chief Public Officer. Item number two, as presented in the call.
Could you just read it, Mr. Branyan? Could you just read the resolve clause, please?
I'll be happy to. Resolved that the RTM approves the lease with Boys and Girls Clubs of Greenwich for the property located at One Horse Neck Lane in Greenwich. The lease will be for the period beginning October 25, 2022, and ending on September 30, 2024, with options to renew through May 31, 2025.
Thank you very much. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Item 10 has been moved and seconded and is now before us. May we have the reports from the committees that considered this item, beginning with Kip Bergweger of our Legislative and Rules Committee?
Good evening, RTM and guests. The Legislative and Rules Committee met last Monday to consider items 10 and 11, which we'll get to later. As noted, item 10 is the lease with the Boys and Girls Club for a property located at One Horse Neck Lane in Greenwich. We had at our meeting Megan Sweeney, Vice President of Administration for the Boys and Girls Club, and Abby Wadler, Assistant Town Attorney. We went over the lease. First of all, however, Ms. Sweeney provided feedback on the property that the organization would be liking, would want to lease. Ms. Sweeney described the property's location, indicated it will be used for administrative purposes during renovations to their existing facility. She also indicated that it would not be used for any programs. She stated that planning and zoning had approved a two-year lease with an option to extend no later than May 1, 2025. Ms. Sweeney and Attorney Wadler stated that the language is the same as in the lease approved for Neighbor to Neighbor, and all insurance requirements have been met. I would note that I am on the Board of Neighbor to Neighbor and had helped negotiate that lease, and it's not terrible for the tenants, so I can say that. It was actually quite fair. The District Six delegate pointed out that the time of transfer from one tenant to the other seemed tight, but Ms. Wadler clarified that Neighbor to Neighbor had already vacated the space. The delegate from District Seven pointed out unclear language on page 13, where a 12% per annum penalty would begin to accrue. Ms. Wadler acknowledged that this sentence could be clarified, so the delegate from District Seven proposed language be changed, and the delegate from District 11 seconded that. We developed some additional language as an amendment, approved it 1000. I also failed to mention that at the beginning of our meeting, two of our districts, Districts One and Nine, were having difficulty getting on the telephone that we had connected for our Zoom meeting, and so they were unable to participate in the meeting. So we had only 10 districts at the time. Our vote on legal merit and on the legal order and the merits as amended was 1000, and I will propose the amendment at the appropriate time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Harris, would you like to offer the report of the Finance Committee? Brooks Harris, chairman of the Finance Committee?
Good evening. Ben Branyan came to Finance to present this proposal to us, and basically, I'm not going to repeat everything that was just said. We did note that because the terms were substantially similar to previous tenants who also used this property as temporary location while they were renovating their existing spaces, we felt that that was fair. There was some brief discussion on the fact that this is a temporary structure that seems to be used over and over again, so some question as to whether or not that's going to be appropriate. But for the term of this lease, it was perfectly acceptable, and Finance approved this 1100 with District One absent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Peterberg, chairman of our Land Use Committee, please.
Good evening, Ms. Moderator, fellow members, Zoomers around the world.
I hope not.
So the Land Use Committee took up item 10 last Monday. We also had Mr. Branyan, our Town Administrator, Megan Sweeney, Vice President of Administration for the Boys and Girls Club, and Nancy Rissman, Advisory Board and Project Manager for construction of the Boys and Girls Club. And as you heard, this is a two-year lease with an option to renew. Planning and zoning has granted municipal improvement status for this project. Planning and zoning has granted municipal improvement status for this project. The town expects this to be the last use of this building, and any additional extension would need to go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval. Ms. Sweeney and Ms. Rissman explained that they would use the building for administrative offices and storage because they need to vacate the entire Boys and Girls Club facility during construction. Their programs will be relocated to various sites in town, and having the administration in a central location where they can also have some oversight over construction will be invaluable. Our delegate from District Two, Tina Volgoin, expressed concern about the appearance of the temporary structure, how long it has been in place, that it takes up commuter parking spaces, and that the town has indicated every subsequent use after the first would be the final use. The Land Use Committee voted 10-1-0 to approve this item. District Two voted no because of her concerns stated earlier and because she sees it as a great disservice and is highly offensive to taxpayers and local residents that nonprofits are provided a $1 a year lease for swing space while they are renovating. Again, it was 10-1-0.
Thank you very much. Mr. Richard Newman, Chairman of our Town Services Committee, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Madam Moderator. Town Services met last Tuesday. We had Christina Vittoria from Boys and Girls Club of Greenwich. Abby Wadler represented the town, though she had a problem with the Zoom meeting. Everything we talked about has been covered, though I will say we were pleased that the $2 million or $2.5 million building continues to be used for charities and public institutions in the Town of Greenwich, spreading the cost of that over many more years. I think it was assigned to us because it was originally used as a firehouse. We voted 12-00.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bergweger, would you like to offer the L and R amendment right now?
Very happy to do so. The language change was in the Legislative Rules Committee report sent to everyone, so you've all had a chance to see it. I will just read it. It's Section 12E of the lease, the second paragraph, and I will indicate where the changes are. It says, "If the town makes any expenditures or encourages any obligations for the payment of money in connection therewith, including but not limited to costs, fines, penalties, interest, damages, and reasonable attorney's fees, in instituting, prosecuting, or defending any action or proceeding, such sums paid or obligations shall be paid," the word immediately was deleted, "shall be paid within 10 days by the corporation to the town upon the rendition of any bill or statement to the corporations therefore." Delete the words "together with interest theron" and replace them with "after which interest shall accrue at a rate equal to 12% per annum." That is the change.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion on the motion to amend Section 12E? Any objection to that L and R motion to amend the language? Hearing none, that motion to amend may be adopted upon unanimous consent. That brings us to the... Oh, there is one person who has signed up to speak. Is Christina Vittoria here? Oh, there you are. Ms. Vittoria is the Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Club.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you to the RTM and to Moderator Volgeres for allowing me to speak today. I'll try to be brief. As you said, my name is Christina Vittoria, and I am the CEO at the Boys and Girls Club of Greenwich. As many of you know, the Boys and Girls Club of Greenwich has been a cornerstone of the Greenwich community since we first opened our doors over 100 years ago in 1910. We provide a safe, structured, fun environment for all children in Greenwich. Over 300 youth ages 6 to 18 walk through our doors every day. The club is open every day after school, during school vacations and holidays, as well as the summer, to help support families in Greenwich who need affordable, reliable option for their children out of school. The One Horse Neck Lane property will provide critical space for our staff during our vital renovation. Our ability to occupy the space in advance of the project will enable us to relocate our administrative offices and clear out the contents of the clubhouse, which will help us expedite the commencement of the renovation. Also, the proximity of the renovation also allows us to oversee the project and ensure adherence to the project timeline, and it will serve as a meeting space for our staff and board leaders to meet with architects, contractors, as we manage the process. The club cannot suspend our services during this renovation. We cannot afford to lose a year. This would leave hundreds of kids and families without critical after-school and holiday care. The One Horse Neck Lane will ensure that our services to hundreds of kids every day will continue with minimal disruption. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Before we go to our second item in the Group Two combined calendar, I just want to give you the consent calendar vote. Those in favor, 203. Opposed, 1 abstaining 0. The consent calendar has carried. So now we move on to Item 11. May we have the resolution for Item 11? And again, Jenny, I think it's Mr. Branyan on the line that'll be introducing it for us.
Item Number 11, resolved that the representative town meeting approved the attached lease between the Town of Greenwich and Ableist Inc. of town-owned property located at 101 Orchard Street, Cos Cob, Connecticut, for a term of 10 years, ending September 30th, 2032.
Thank you very much. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Item 11 has been moved and seconded, and it's now before us. May we have the reports from the committees that considered this item? Mr. Harris, you are racing first. Brooks Harris, Chairman of our Finance Committee.
Thank you. Joe Siciliano came to present at Finance and basically explained that this is an extension of their existing lease on substantially similar terms. He characterized Ableist as a model tenant and that the neighbors and everybody else have been very pleased and unbothered by their presence there, and there's a lot of support for Ableist. This was non-controversial after a short Q and A. Finance approved this 11-00 with District One absent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bergweger, would you like to go next? Kip Bergweger, Chairman of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Again, Legislative and Rules met Monday night. For Item 11, we were assisted by Assistant Town Attorney Abby Wadler. She explained that the lease was the exact lease that Ableist had used for the property over the previous 10 years. It was the idea, the purpose of the utilization of the property was a group home for a maximum of six residents. The District Six delegate raised concerns. There is a provision in the lease that residents shall participate in work activities full-time away from the property. The District Six delegate felt that this language didn't seem realistic, asked how the organization could comply. Ms. Wadler stated she was not sure how closely Ableist was following this requirement, but its intention was to meet the requirements of that provision. The delegate from District Six also questioned the right of Ableist to warrant that residents would be free from forensic and/or psychiatric issues, which is a requirement of the lease. And she asked if this might be considered discriminatory. Ms. Wadler explained that this was meant to address cases where the resident might be a danger to herself or himself or to others. The District Seven delegate stated this was also retrospective, not perspective, that if someone has something dangerous, this gives the town the right to take appropriate steps should actions of a resident lead to unsafe conditions. The L and R committee also discussed several state statutes, which are mentioned throughout the lease. The delegate from District 11 asked if there had been any issues with problems with the residents, and was Ms. Wadler saying that there have not been any to her knowledge. She mentioned that a number of the requirements in the lease are requirements of state law. The item passed unanimously. I voted 10-0 on both legal order and on the merits.
Thank you very much. Mr. Peterberg, Chairman of our Land Use Committee.
Good evening again, and I love going after Legislative and Rules because I can say we heard the same thing. We had Joe Siciliano, our Director of Parks and Recreation. And to be clear, what we're talking about here is the Contemporary House on the Pomerance Property in Cos Cob on Orchard Street, which Ableist has occupied for the last 10 years, and this is a new 10-year lease. And our vote on this item was 12-0-0.
Thank you very much. Catherine La Balbo, Chairwoman of our Parks and Recreation Committee.
Good evening, members of the RTM. Your Park and Recreation Committee met last Tuesday evening to discuss the lease for Ableist. We heard, as Siciliano was there to present to us, that Ableist has been a tenant in good standing for the last 10 years. They made substantial improvements to the building itself over that time, that the only change in this lease was permission to put in a gate to secure the property, and whether that gate would be manually operated or motorized was still in negotiation. The committee stumbled upon a bit of duplicative language, and putting on our L and R hats, which is always a dangerous moment, decided to make a motion to strike from the first whereas clause. Is this all right to put this forward now?
I'm sorry, what?
The whereas clause, strike.
Well, why don't you give your report, and you can discuss your amendment, and then you'll give your amendment after you've concluded with your report.
To strike from the whereas clause, repetitive language where it says, "with an option to renew for a period of 10 years, the intent of the lease is a 10-year lease, and the renewal is outlined in Section 14." Then the item was... That passed 12-0-0. The item was taken up as amended, and the vote was 12-0-0.
Great. Okay, don't go anywhere. So would you now like to offer your amendment formally?
Sure. The Park and Recreation Committee would like to put forward an amendment to Item Number 11 and strike from the last whereas clause with an option to renew for a period of 10 years.
Okay. So the revised whereas clause would then just say, "whereas for said purposes, the town and Ableist hereby enter into this lease provided for the 10-year lease term," here and after the lease, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That amendment being offered on behalf of a committee does not require a second and is now before us. Debate on the Parks and Recreation motion to amend that last whereas clause. Hearing none, that amendment may stand adopted upon unanimous consent. Further debate on Item 11. No one has signed up to speak on that. Doesn't look like anybody wants to right now. Will the district tabulators please mark your voting cards? Combined calendar, Group Number Two, Items 10 and 11, and please proceed to poll your delegation. Thank you. All right, we're going to keep moving along. Time's up. I did want to let anybody know who's missing a pair of glasses that they have been... We have found a pair of women's glasses. Okay. So Ms. Salibi, why don't you come and collect them?
I shall put them right here.
Okay. We're now going to start with our three separate items. Item Number Four is the nomination of Larry Simon to the Board of Nathaniel Witherall. And is First Selectman Camilo here to read that resolution? All right. Janet Stone-McWiggen, can you please come up and read it on behalf of the selectmen then? Thank you very much. Do you want a copy of the call? Here.
All right. Resolved that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a regular member of the Board of Nathaniel Witherall, R4, for a term expiring June 30, 2025.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved in second and is now before us. Excellent multitasking. May we have the reports from the committees that consider this item? We have, would appointments like to go first? We have three committees, or at least two. I don't know if Budget Overview is going to give a report. I know they met with them. Bob McKnight, Chairman of our Appointments Committee.
Good evening once again. At our Appointments meeting, October 18, we met with Lawrence Simon. Mr. Simon began with defining the duties of his governance board to the day-to-day operations of Nathaniel Witherall. Mr. Simon briefed us on the current situation at Nathaniel Witherall, its loss in Medicare star ratings from a five to a three to a one star, the reasons for the decline, and the board's plan to fix the ratings and improve patient outcomes, and rectify the accounts receivable problems. Mr. Simon detailed the reduction in admissions due to COVID and the change in rehabilitation procedures favoring at-home care, difficulty of replacing staff. Currently, there are nine staff openings and nine employees on leave, as well as turnover in billing, which has led to a $10-plus million receivables. Reduction in the star ratings was a result of multiple items, mostly due to staffing and patient care focus. As a result, the board has terminated Director of Nursing, searching now for a replacement, instituted weekly staff meetings, researching the outsourcing of billing and collections, in the process of changing the food vendor, and commencing nurse training upgrades. Mr. Simon also discussed future scenarios for Nathaniel Witherall, which will be further discussed in the December 15 public meeting. Mr. Simon answered questions on the correlation between the budget and the staffing and the ratings, the board oversight on Nathaniel Witherall management, explanation of the star rating systems when he knew about the violations, it was a two-week delay, and his responsibilities as chair. Mr... Our vote to appoint Larry Simon was 11-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Allison Solar, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee, please.
Thanks. Good evening, moderator, fellow RTM members and guests. Your Health and Human Services Committee met last Tuesday night, and we discussed number four, the appointment of Mr. Simon to Nathaniel Witherall Board. We also invited John Masternardi, the Executive Director of Nathaniel Witherall, and had Larry there as well to give an update on Nathaniel Witherall, answer the committee's questions. Most of the questions were regarding the recent one-star rating of the facility. So Mr. Masternardi stated that although the staffing and quality measures each received a four out of five-star rating, it was the health measures where the deficiencies were found and affected the overall rating. He said to address this, they've begun weekly audits with the newly formed Plan of Correction Quality Assurance Committee, POCQAC. They are planning internal monthly mock surveys through January, and will also have an external group perform a mock survey in January, so they are prepared for the February and March, when it's likely CMS will return for the official survey. He added that the POCQAC committee will look at all health aspects such as fall prevention, wound care, UTIs, weight loss medicine, reduction in hospital readmissions, et cetera. Mr. Masternardi and Mr. Simon also addressed the dining services issue, stating that they have been very disappointed with the current service, and they are in negotiations to change to METS, which is a very close second choice when they had issued an RFP a year ago. Mr. Masternardi stated that the Director of Nursing left on September 16, as you heard, and they are working with a search firm to hire for the position. Some of the questions focused around this issue when they were asked, with regard to the one-star rating, where does the buck stop, with the board or the administration? Mr. Masternardi stated that it stops with him and the nursing director. He explained that the board does not execute the daily operations, staff does. Mr. Simon added that the board's responsibility is governance, and that the board was shocked to learn of the survey's results. He added that recently the staff was not happy about the settlement of the Teamsters contract, which exacerbated the situation, and he stated they were struggling during COVID to hire nurses and to hire the right staff. He added that during his six years as Chair on the Board, he's seen the change, where now people are coming to Nathaniel Witherall later in life, more frail, with more serious medical conditions, and that the staff was not always equipped for this, so they had to do more trainings, et cetera, and are continuing to do so. After the committee finished asking Mr. Masternardi and Mr. Simon a number of questions, we addressed specifically item number four, Mr. Simon's appointment. First, Sheila Smith, co-chair of the Family Circle at Nathaniel Witherall, endorsed Mr. Simon's appointment, and said that she believes the one-star rating is a direct result of the pressure from Town Hall to cut funding, and she added that she hopes Mr. Simon in his next term will have a more hands-on approach to management. At least five members of the committee added endorsements of Mr. Simon, stating that he has come to this committee over the years telling us the good and the bad, with transparency, honesty, actions and solutions, without sentimentality, just facts. One alternate member and one RTM member, who was a guest at the meeting, both strongly stated their opposition to Mr. Simon's reappointment, citing the infractions listed in the survey, and that they show serious negligence, that he should have known what was happening, that Nathaniel Witherall has deteriorated under his leadership, and that oversight is the role of the board. When asked about a succession plan for the Chair of the Board, Mr. Simon stated that the board is weak in this area, and that it's difficult to recruit board members, let alone find those who want to take on the responsibilities of the Chair. Another member asked how much time Mr. Simon spends at Nathaniel Witherall. He stated that he spends about 15 hours a week in meetings, calls, visits, et cetera. Mr. Masternardi stated that Mr. Simon is always available and makes time for any issues. One member of the committee expressed frustration that others are looking for a scapegoat, and two other members stated that they were very conflicted. After many comments about Mr. Simon's service, Mr. Simon stated himself that he knows he doesn't have a command on every single detail, that he regrets he didn't know about the accounts receivable issue earlier, and they didn't realize the extent of the unhappiness of the staff over the recent town negotiations, but that he holds himself responsible for the survey results and to making improvements necessary to ensure the quality of care for the residents. We voted 9 to 1. Districts 5 and 7 voted no. District 1 abstained. The no vote said it was time for a change, and that Mr. Simon should have seen red flags, including the accounts receivable issue. The member who abstained said it was because she was going to vote no, but an endorsement changed her mind.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. McKnight just wanted to make a correction to something he reported in his report.
Yes, our vote on Larry was 11-0-1. The abstention believed the vote should be postponed until the December 15 public meeting on the future of the center.
Thank you very much. Ms. Janson, I understand you met with Mr. Simon. Are you giving a report on his candidacy? Okay. Okay. That brings us to debate on item four. We have six speakers signed up. Our first speaker is Stephen Meskers of District 6.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. It's not my habit, and don't worry, this isn't going to be my process over the next couple of years, to stand in front of the RTM at every meeting. In fact, I prefer not to be here and have this conversation. We all put ourselves out on the level of public service, you know, myself currently, for the grand total of $28,000, maybe 40 next year, if, depending on how the results come. We spend our time dedicated to the public, dedicated to the service of the community, to the best of our abilities. Mr. Simon has been a long-term volunteer. You know, I know him from the last, I think, I was corrected by the prior moderator, for my last 20 years or 19 years on the RTM. He has been in every facet of volunteerism in this town, and has given his heart and his soul to the town when he could be off looking for sunnier skies and spending his time enjoying his own life. And I think that dedication is important. We're going to be sitting in front of us with a decision in December. That's going to be a decision about the level of town involvement in this facility and other issues. To take people who've dedicated their time and the treasure of their concern, and not allow them to be part of that decision, I think is an error. I think we're going to be sitting here, and we're going to have a lot of decisions to make about the town level of participation, the town financial involvement, yes or no, et cetera. And to have people who have been in the best and the worst of this situation, and that situation arises on the back of COVID. If you've missed the problems that have gone on the nursing home industry over the last 10 years, you know what's going on in the hospitals with nurses. You know the shortages, the inability to get the appropriate help? It's awful. So I would urge you to vote to support the renomination at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Terrestieri of District 7, please.
Okay. I just want to start off by just acknowledging that this is a difficult job to have, to stand up here in front of all you, all of you, my colleagues. First of all, thank you for allowing me the opportunity. I'm sorry. What I'm asking you to do is to go against what's been recommended by the Board of Selectmen, the Appointments Committee, and the Health and Human Services Committee. I believe when I became an RTM member that I came here to represent my neighbors, and the residents of Nathaniel Witherall are my neighbors. So I'm here to represent them. Some of you may argue that you should vote no to Larry's reappointment because of millions of dollars of uncollected bills. Someone else can make that point. I'm going to stick to the patient responsibility, those that are most precious, which are our seniors. In 2021, the Centers for Medicare/Medicaid Services downgraded Nathaniel Witherall from five to three, and in March '22, it downgraded to one star, with 16 violations, when the state average was 6.9. In November 2021, Larry Simon was quoted in the Greenwich Times after the first downgrade to three stars by quote, saying, "Things that are more damaging to me are patient neglect, improper medication, bed sores, failure to treat, and falls. Those are really a side of bad nursing." Well, Mr. Simon, the more damaging things have now happened. I want to stop blaming staff. The March 22 spot violation, spot survey violations included mistreatment of residents, verbal abuse by staff, improper resident care, building condition violations, improper storage of prescription and non-prescription medications. It's not acceptable. To explain to you how a one-star rating works, because I know there were questions about this at committees, from the CMMS website, the health inspection star rating is based on each current health inspection and two prior inspections, as well as the finding from the most recent three years of complaint inspections and three years of infection control inspections. Mr. Simon has recently been quoted to say, quote, "I tried to tell people, the board is a governing board, not an operating one." I want to share with you what the definition of governance is, according to Merriam-Webster. The definition of governance is the act or process of governing or overseeing the control and direction of something such as a country or organization. I want to tell you one resident's story briefly. November 12, 2021, Resident 126, I wish I could give this person a name, weighed 169.6 pounds on admission. Within a month in a period of hospitalization, that resident's weight was down by 23.6 pounds. The nutritional care plan dated that same day said to monitor weights on a weekly basis and start providing supplements. Over the next five weeks, between January 7 and February 18, the resident was weighed only two times. Five weekly weight sheets were blank. The resident now 130 pounds. By February 28, approximately 100 days from the admission, the resident had lost 46.2 pounds. That's 30% of that resident's body weight. When interviewed, the resident themselves spoke to the surveyor and said, "The food was cold for many of the meals, so he or she did not eat very much." He or she indicated that it was good to lose the first 10 pounds, but they didn't want to lose this much. Upon interviewing Witherall nurses, physicians, and dieticians, the following were also noted by the surveyor. The resident nurse indicated she didn't see any progress notes in the 110 days, 110 days that the patient was admitted, that the APRN, or the physician, nor the physician, were notified when the ongoing significant weight loss was noted. No reasons were also noted. When the physician was interviewed on March 1, he indicated that he was not aware nor recall that the resident had lost any weight, and if so, the nurses did not notify him. He said he would have expected to see a nursing note. He indicated if he had known that this level of weight loss had occurred, that he would have checked for fluid overload, checked for the patient's diabetes, do blood work, physical exams, check documentation about how they were eating, the pending physical exam, and other things listed. Talking to the dietitian, she said that she would have expected more weight loss measurements to have been done, at least weekly. That dietitian also indicated that the physician and the family members should have been noted, notified, excuse me. Since the citations, there have been a lot of blame throwing around by the Chair and Director. Let's blame the staff. I ask, where does the buck stop? In August 2022, Amy Fadini and Sheila Smith, co-chairs of the Nathaniel Witherall Family Council, wrote a letter to the editor. They want to do, stop blaming the staff. Rather than blaming the care staff for the degradation of service, we encourage the First Selectman, Witherall's Executive Director, Board Chair, and Directors to look within, so that a genuine effort can be made to restore Witherall to the quality facility that Greenwich expects. They also noted, which really bothered me, that residents don't often complain because they're concerned that there would be repercussions. We, as Greenwich residents, pride ourselves on the quality of our schools, our infrastructure, and the services for residents' active years. It should continue for long-term care residents. Mr. Simon was quoted last week in the Greenwich Times, saying, "I think I should be re-nominated." The RTM might not think that, but I think that. Somebody has to do this job, and it's not like there's a long line out the door. It's a difficult job. I am happy to do it. Mr. Simon, just because there's not a long line out the door, it's not an excuse for the state that Nathaniel Witherall is in. Blame staff, blame COVID. Now we start training? Now we start internal audits? Why didn't that happen in 2019, when the star rating dropped from five to three? We need to stop blaming the staff, and I'm sorry, but you need to be held accountable. No one wants the job, so we should just leave you there? I want to bring up the last thing, which is something that I learned today, and it's in regards to COVID death reporting at Witherall. I was asked to fact-check something for a fellow RTM member. All nursing homes are required to report COVID-related deaths to Medicare/Medicaid on a weekly basis. Okay? This has been happening since 2020. As recent as the RTM Health and Human Services Committee meeting, we were told that there were 11 deaths at Nathaniel Witherall during the pandemic. Per the Medicare/Medicaid website this morning, as of January 20 of 2022, that's 36 weeks of reporting, the last 36 weeks, there have been 24 deaths due to COVID. So for 36 weeks, we have reported to Medicare/Medicaid that there were 24 deaths. But as of last week, we're hearing 11. I want you to scratch your head on that one. So I'm asking you to place our seniors as a first priority. They should be. It clearly hasn't been a priority for the Chair, and I want you to go back and think about what the co-chairs of the Family And I want you to go back and think about what the co-chairs of the family council said, "Stop blaming others and start taking accountability." Thank you. Thank you. Sheila Smith, co-chair, or one of the co-chairs of the Nathaniel Witherall Family Council.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sheila Smith, co-chair of the Nathaniel Witherall Family Council, which is made up of family and friends of Witherall residents. And I have to agree, of course, with a lot of what the two previous speakers have said, not everything, but certainly a lot of it. I'm here this evening to encourage you to support the reappointment of Larry Simon as chairman of the Witherall Board of Directors. The decline in Witherall's star rating doesn't fall on the shoulders of Larry Simon. Rather, we believe that it falls squarely on Town Hall and its pressure to cut the Witherall budget beyond a sustainable care level, number one. Number two, the town's recalcitrance in settling the Teamsters contract led to very low staff morale. And three, there were some less-than-stellar staff hires. Mr. Simon has a clear understanding of the Nathaniel Witherall, as well as the nursing home industry. Consistency of board leadership is particularly important during this time of turmoil. Mr. Simon should be given the opportunity to complete the RFP process initiated by the First Selectmen's Office two years ago at the beginning of the pandemic and put an end, finally, to the uncertainty of the future of Nathaniel Witherall. Furthermore, I expect Mr. Simon in his next term to be more hands-on with management and inclusive of family members so we can work together to make Witherall once again the quality facility Greenwich deserves. And we're beginning to see signs of that already. Lastly, I'd like to say to those who believe the town of Greenwich should not be in the nursing home business, perhaps we shouldn't be in the beach business, tennis court, or golf course business either, as those town services are not expected to turn a profit. I say, thank God Greenwich is in the nursing home business and has the ability to operate and support a five-star facility of which we can all be proud. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Frederick Lee of District One, to be followed by Donna Garioso-Ziel.
Thank you, Madam moderator and fellow RTM members. I am here before you today to ask you to vote no on item number four for Mr. Simon for the appointment to the Nathaniel Witherall Board. I'm asking you to vote no, not because of incumbency to make a change for change's sake, and not because of the privatization issues, not because of party affiliations, and not because of the hubris that no one is irreplaceable. I'm asking you to vote no to ensure the safety and well-being of our seniors at Nathaniel Witherall. I'm asking you to vote no to save lives immediately. I'm asking you to vote no, as I hope you have all read the email from a resident whose mother passed after being hospitalized six times since January from Witherall. I'm asking you to vote no to change direction at Witherall. The current board has not upheld their responsibilities of oversight at Witherall. As recently as October 13, at the BOC meeting, Mr. Simon, the board chair, has not taken any responsibility for the current two-year slide and the CMS rating from a five-star to a one-star. Mr. Simon has indicated that he is only responsible for strategy and not operations. Although I disagree with that his responsibility only is strategy, I would have expected that after Witherall dropped from a five-star to a three-star, it would have served as a notice to immediately get more deeply involved. If Mr. Simon's role is only strategy, then going from a five-star to a one-star over two years indicates there is a defective strategy as well. Mr. Simon has also appraised the work of executive director at Witherall by saying, quote, "John has the faith of the board," on August 6, 2022, after Witherall became a one-star facility. I'm not sure how much we should be praising at a time when we had 24 deaths due to COVID at Witherall since May 2020, according to the latest CMS reading. Now, just to put that in perspective, the entire town had 127 deaths due to COVID. So to have 24 deaths just at Nathaniel Witherall out of 127, to me, is not really a perfect record. There were 16 citations at the latest CMS inspection report. That resulted in a one-star rating, while the state averaged 6.9 in terms of citations. Would you trust a one-star facility for either yourself or your loved ones? As Mr. Simon himself has quoted us saying on November 30, 2021, quote, "If you go to a one- or two-star facility, it's really depressing, but there are a lot of facilities like that," end quote. If you felt a belief that Witherall has dealt with these quality issues, I'm sorry to tell you, it has not. According to the executive director at last week's board meeting, they continue to fail many of the same violations according to their own mock surveys. We are Greenwich. We deserve, and the residents of Witherall deserve better than a one-star facility. We, the RTM board, have oversight over the Witherall Board nominations, and we need to act immediately to change the quality of care at Witherall. We, the RTM, need to vote no to literally save lives. We, the RTM, need to stand up for those that are vulnerable and do not have a voice. We all join the RTM to make a positive difference in Greenwich and our community. We have choices to make, and we need to lead. We, the RTM, are at the moment where we can really make a life-saving difference. Your vote tonight can make a difference. I'm asking you to vote no to prevent any further patient neglect at Nathaniel Witherall. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Donna Garioso-Ziel, to be followed by Larry Simon, and he will be our final speaker on this item.
Good evening. I stand before you tonight in hope that you will support the renomination of Lawrence Simon. What he brings to the board, he has a knack for bringing experts to the board. I have sat on Health and Human Services for many years, and I'm always impressed at the people he gets to join the board. Most hospital systems pay a large amount of money to get these types of individuals on the board. Larry has that knack for getting people to work and volunteer in this town. The second thing is, I've been in healthcare for over 45 years. I've been a former healthcare administrator. The board's job is to oversee. It's the aerial view down on the project. The boots on the ground are the administrators of the facility. When something is wrong, you look to the administrators. When the surveys are done, it's the administrators who are there. I have never been with a board member once in all the years that I've done surveys for Medicare or Joint Commission. It is the administrator of the facility who oversees that, not the board. But the buck does stop with the board. If there is a problem, it's under their direction that the change should be made. And this board has made the change by basically doing away or basically getting rid of the director of nursing, who really writes the policies for this institution. And the third reason why I think you should support Mr. Simon is the fact that we don't know what's going to happen with Nathaniel Witherall in the next few years. He brings a skill set that no one, and I repeat, no one in this town has. One, he's been with Nathaniel Witherall for a number of years and has been the head of the board. He's learned about short-term rehabilitation, long-term care. He's learned what mistakes he's made. He's learned how to rectify them. There's a process in place now to rectify. Give them a chance to straighten out Nathaniel Witherall. And the second skill set that he brings is, he's been on the BET. He knows the philosophy of this town, about the mil rate, about being accountable to the taxpayers of this town. Where are you going to get someone with those skill sets at this late date? Are we going to start from the beginning and take another 10 years to figure out what we're going to do with Nathaniel Witherall? I ask you. We've been talking about this for years. This is someone that I think that needs to be at the table when we decide what's going to happen. It would be a great loss to not renominate him at this time. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Larry Simon, chairman, current chairman of the Board of Nathaniel Witherall.
I want to thank everybody who spoke, either for me or against me. I thought your passions were very good, and I took them to heart. Witherall is at a key point in its life at the moment. We have the RFP. We're going to have a public hearing on December 15 at 5:30 to 7:00, where people can opine as to what they think the future of Witherall should be. There have been changes that have to be made at Witherall. I would be hard-pressed to minimize some of the things that went on. There were, and we've made some changes, especially within the nursing related to the survey results, which were terrible, in finance relative to the AR, which is also terrible, food service, which is not good. And you want to ask what's good? Some things. But we, you know, my job is to make sure that the administration focuses on a certain number of items, not all of them at once, to make sure that we get enough resources that we can from the town, that we follow the town budget procedures, and do the best we can within the constraints. Now, it may be that Witherall will not fit within a town department. It may be that, and the choices you're going to be able to discuss on the 15th are, and I hear these points from everybody, should we be subsidized to the extent of $3 million a year and not squeeze so tightly? Point one. Should we try and run Witherall leanly and try and be as close to break even as possible, which is what we're doing today? Should we merge and lease ourselves to a for-profit company? And four, should we try and find a place within the continuum of care where we might end up in a better place? Those are the four choices as I see them. There may be others that are going to come out of the discussion. But I think I have a lot of perspective on leading that discussion and helping the town make the best decision. I have no particular bias one way or the other. I have an interest in doing what is best for the town, and I've told people this. Some of the items that were raised, I think, are below, somewhat below the level of detail that I get involved with, although I hear a lot of the conversations that go on at Witherall, and I try to fix them, and we try to fix them. It's not so easy to fix everything at once. And I've talked to John about this, of slowing down. But I do believe that in overall, I provide pretty good guidance. I provide a philosophical direction that we should do the best we can within the budget we have, that we should decide what we want to do as a town. We're going to have a discussion, probably not the only discussion, and we're going to come to some conclusion over the next six months over what Witherall should be. I think I bring a lot of background and knowledge to that discussion, and therefore, I think I would be deserving of being on the board and helping lead that discussion. I've been working at Witherall on and off since 1998, first as volunteer, then on the BET, a little hiatus for the retirement board, and then the chairman of Witherall. So I have a pretty good understanding of the issues. Doesn't mean they're easy to solve, but I try my best. I don't succeed everywhere. I can only do what I can do within the constraints of running a nursing home for the town of Greenwich. Excuse me. You know, it's not as if I can just say to somebody, "You're gone. You're gone." That doesn't work that way. You go through a long procedure. But I think that I bring enough oversight and direction to Witherall that I should be appointed for, which will be a third, and I would guarantee you a last term. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we take a vote on Mr. Simon's nomination, item number four, I do just want to read the combined calendar item, group number two, items 10 and 11. Those in favor, 207; opposed, two; abstaining, zero, that those items have carried. Will the district tabulators please mark your voting cards, item four, and proceed to pull your delegation? If you're in favor of reappointing Mr. Simon to the board, you would vote yes. If you are opposed, you would vote no. Thank you. Thank you. Great. We now have made our way to the last two items. Item number 14 is the Teamsters collective bargaining agreement, and I believe Michael Mason, our labor negotiator, is going to be introducing that.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Good evening, members and guests. Item 14 is before you. Resolved at the representative town meeting, exercising its authority pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 7, Section 7-474B, and the fiscal 2223 budget resolution hereby rejects the use of funds necessary to implement the terms of the International Order of Teamsters Local 456 Collective Bargaining Agreement Extension covering fiscal year '24. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The item has been moved and seconded, and is now before us. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this item, beginning with Michael Spilo, chairman of our Labor Contracts Committee?
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Your Labor Contracts Committee reviewed the Teamster agreement and looked at the cost of contract. We heard from Mr. Mason, who indicated that this was a one-year extension for a 2.3 GWI and a net increase of 2.2% in total pay. The reason for the one-year extension is that there are multiple contracts that are coming due in the next 12 months, and giving an extension on very limited terms to the Teamsters moves the Teamsters contract off the schedule for this year to the following year, allowing more time for other discussions. We did not have anything in terms of comparables for this extension, but we felt that it's substantially below other contracts that we have approved and that are before us tonight. And on that basis, and for the reason that the number of contracts coming due immediately, we felt that it should be approved. We did review... There was some discussion about interest inflation rates and how that would... whether that would put the town in a worse position one year out. And this contract doesn't take effect for essentially a year from that, so it's a two-year window before inflation has an impact on that and should be backed down. We voted 6-0 in favor of this contract.
Thank you. Mr. Brooks Harris, chairman of the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Mr. Mason presented this at Finance, and the most salient points that were brought up are, one, we have six contracts that are scheduled to be negotiated in the next 12 months. Very difficult to do all six at the same time, so this contract is going to be extended by one year. The GWI on this contract seemed fairly reasonable relative to the inflation that's out there right now, and as a result, we agreed that we should not reject this, so we voted no, 0110, with D1 absent.
Thank you very much. Richard Newman, chairman of our Town Services Committee.
Good evening. Town Services had Michael Mason with us. We had a similar discussion as the previous two reports. We also appreciate that they're thinking about moving the contracts, extending them. Hopefully, you can do it again. There are nine contracts. Maybe we can do three every year for three years. Town Services voted 01120 to not reject the contract.
Thank you. I do want to give you, before you begin, Ms. Jansen, the vote on the reappointment of Larry Simon to the Board of Nathaniel Witherall. Those in favor, 113; opposed, 87; abstaining, 10, that item has carried. Ms. Jansen, Chairwoman of the Budget Overview Committee.
Good evening. As customary, the BOC took up the labor contract, given the impact to the town budget. This union represents town and Board of Ed employees in blue-collar trades and form in classification and nurses at Nathaniel Witherall. As indicated by others, the Teamsters contract is a one-year extension to a pre-existing contract that started 2019-20. The extension has a cost of $50 million comprising of wages, health care, and retirement costs for the period from July 1st, 2023, and ending July 1st, 2024. The only negotiated change is a wage increase of 2.3%. This union has no step increases, and so this represents the full cost of the wage. Wage increases do impact other parts of the labor contract, namely in retirement benefits. No other changes will occur in the one-year contract. The Labor Contract Committee Chair, Mike Spilo, gave a brief PowerPoint presentation to our committee that depicted the LCC's research and rationale for their vote. Mr. Spilo noted that over a 20-year period, Teamsters has been the union with wage increases most closely aligned with CPI. Spilo relayed the LCC vote of 070. The BOC voted then unanimously to oppose the rejection at 01120. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig Emmettson, vice chairman of the Public Works Committee, please.
Good evening, members of the RTM, guests, and Madam Moderator. We took this item up on Monday, the 17th, and I'm not going to repeat everything that was just said, because basically, we went over all the same materials. And ultimately, we took a vote on this, which was 0102 to reject the rejection, to say no to this rejection. Districts 1 and 10 abstained. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have one speaker on the speaker sign-up list, Mr. Mike Spilo. No further speakers. We can vote. As a reminder, this is... The resolution is worded to reject. Okay? That's important. So if you are in favor of rejecting the contract, you would vote yes. If you do not want to reject the contract, you would vote no. Is everybody clear on that? Okay. Will the district tabulators please mark your voting cards, item 14, and proceed to pull your delegation? Craig? All right. We are at the final item for our meeting, which is item number 15. Is Kathleen Stowe here to read that resolution? Whenever...
Is that working now?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks so much. Item 15, resolved at the representative town meeting of the town of Greenwich, hereby rejects the agreement between the Board of Education and the Greenwich Education Association representing teachers for the period July 1, 2023, to June 30, 2026. Thank you.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Item 15 has been moved and seconded, and is now before us. May we have the reports from the committees that considered this item, beginning with Michael Spilo of Labor Contracts Committee?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I have a little more to say on this contract. The LCC is tasked with reviewing labor contracts and labor employment practices. I sent out the LCC findings by email, and I won't review them in full detail in the hopes that you've all done your homework. I hope that, at this point, no one questions the Greenwich teachers are the highest paid in the state by a large margin. But to be clear, the LCC vote to reject the contract doesn't mean that anyone is looking for a zero-pay increase, or even a pay increase below projected inflation. What we're looking for is a pay increase in line with other teacher unions in town. The base pay increase in this contract is 66% higher than the pay increase for the police, who already make 30% less per hour. The police didn't work from home for six months. There's a lot of middle ground below a 66% larger increase. Regarding the process, the LCC met multiple times and looked at and discussed many issues. For example, the National Council on Teacher Quality, which is supported by the Gates, Walton, Rockefeller, and Rockefeller Foundations, say that the only consistent indicator of teacher quality is an individual candidate's performance on literacy tests. Greenwich does not require nor administer such tests as part of our hiring practice, and the BOE ignored recommendations on this. The council's research also shows that school spending in poor districts has some outcome impact, but that the marginal expenditure is, at the level we spend, is a poor use of public resources. Research also shows there is no correlation between pay and outcomes in education. If there was such a correlation, Greenwich children would be the smartest in the world. Greenwich also discussed that, to the extent high salaries do attract the best... The LCC also discussed that, to the extent high salaries do attract the best teachers, we are pulling the best teachers away from poorer communities into Greenwich, where parents regularly support the school system, supplement the school system. We are currently paying our teachers a median of $81 per hour, increasing to $91 per hour in this contract. This is in Fairfield County, where the median worker makes $35 an hour, and nurses, who are in very short supply, make $42 an hour. This pay differential creates difficulties for the rest of the state, both in direct cost to other towns and in pension cost to the state. However, regardless of all this, Greenwich is already the highest-paying district by a large margin, and so what purpose is served by increasing that margin even further? On April 26th, the LCC reached out to the State Department of Education with a request for details on pay and benefits. The data was provided on May 6th and compiled and distributed to the LCC and BOE ahead of the start of negotiations. The BOE was well aware of all of the foregoing. As is customary, the LCC contacted the BOE negotiating team with a request that a member of the BOE join the LCC meeting to discuss the data and plans for upcoming negotiations. The BOE declined to attend. LCC also arranged a collective bargaining training session with a local expert. BOE declined to participate. Subsequently, LCC met several times with Mr. Mason and others to review and discuss the data and the current economic environment. Our data on the economy and inflation was also presented to the BOE ahead of the negotiations. During negotiations, there were offline discussions between Mr. Kelly and GEA president. Subsequently, Mr. Kelly rejected potential creative solutions as being non-negotiable on the basis of his personal assessment of his relationship with the GEA president. The non-negotiable items included adding steps to bring Greenwich's step schedule in line with other towns, an issue which Mr. Mooney indicated he felt we would win on, and giving a different GWI to those receiving steps, as they are already getting an average increase of 4.5%. Prior to the vote by the full Board of Ed, LCC sent a unanimous letter on behalf of the LCC to the Board of Ed expressing our concern and urging the board to reject the contract. When they voted, the Board of Ed had not been given the full cost of contract, nor the detailed findings by the LCC, which were only provided to the negotiating committee, and yet the Board of Ed vote was 5-3. From a fiscal perspective, this is the largest increase in spending since the Great Recession. This contract represents a fiscal shock, which could result in teacher layoffs, and since there is currently a large amount of grant money which is set to expire, this could potentially cause an additional cliff in the funding. The specific details of the arbitration process are complex and... The specific details of the arbitration process are complex, and it won't serve to inform you further at this point, so I won't delve into that. But the LCC did discuss arbitration in great detail and possible outcomes. An LCC analysis based on the parameters provided by Mr. Mooney suggests we would do better. Mr. Kelly of the Board of Ed citing Mr. Mooney believes we would be worse off in arbitration. Neither he nor others from the Board of Ed showed any interest in questioning Mr. Mooney's assertions or understanding the uncertainty or range of possible arbitration outcomes. Again, the guidelines suggested by the BET and BOC allow for both step and GWI increases, but a level more in line with other unions and other towns. The guidelines also allow for pay increases, which maintains Greenwich's significantly higher pay, but without spreading the gap further. Should the RTM reject the contract, the BOE will presumably be more open to these guidelines. The BOE can try to settle prior to the arbitrator's decision, more in line with the guidelines. Should this end up before the arbitrators, the town, BET, and RTM will have a voice, but the BOE will still have the final say on which items are negotiated, as well as best and last offers. For guidance, we in the RTM have the opinion of Mr. Kelly, who believes this is the best possible outcome, but who did not push back on Mr. Mooney. The RTM also has the opinion of the LCC, which heard from Mr. Kelly, and did question and push back on Mr. Mooney in detail, looking for answers to what is the best and worst case and what is the range of possible outcomes. The LCC feel there's plenty of room for improvement. The RTM also have the 20-year track record of the BOE and their law firm, provided by the LCC. Lastly, the RTM have the outcomes with two unions in town, police and Teamsters, as well as several other towns, with Greenwich's increase second only to one town whose top pay is over 30% below Greenwich. The LCC discussed a motion to postpone indefinitely made by Mr. Brown and rejected that motion. The discussion centered around the fact that there is no practical difference between the vote not to reject the contract and the vote to postpone. In both cases, the contract will take effect. The LCC felt the motion to postpone has been regularly ignored by town bodies. LCC discussed that RTM members have three options: we can vote to reject the contract, we can vote not to reject the contract, or we can abstain if we're not certain which is best for the town. Those voting against the motion to postpone felt rejecting the contract would instruct the BOE to try again and come back later with a better outcome. One last financial note: before this contract, the pay difference between Greenwich and New Canaan, the second-highest-paying town, amounts to a difference of $14 million per year in extra cost to Greenwich. In other words, if Greenwich adopted the same pay scale as New Canaan, Greenwich would save $14 million a year, which is about the cost of a new elementary school every two years. This contract will increase the discrepancy beyond that $14 million. The LCC vote was 5-2 to reject this contract, with an alternate member voting no as well. Those voting not to reject, one felt we should support the union, and the other felt that while the process and negotiation were badly handled by the BOE, he believed the BOE would likely bungle the arbitration, too. Those voting to reject the contract felt it was too rich and should be more in line with other unions and towns. They felt it is imprudent to ignore the BET guidelines and to expose the town's finances during a time of economic turmoil. And they felt that we could do better in arbitration based on other union outcomes and outcomes in other towns. Thank you.
Thank you. Brooks Harris, Chairman of the Finance Committee, but before you start, Mr. Harris, I just want to give the vote on item number 14. That was to reject the bargaining agreement for the Teamsters. Those in favor, 10; opposed, 189; abstaining, 5. That motion has failed.
Thank you. Finance spent the majority of its time this month on this issue. Joe Kelly, the primary BOE contact for this item, was unavailable. Kathleen Stowe and Christina Downey presented for the BOE. Jonathan Budd also attended for the schools and presented to us. We also had Mr. Spilo report on what he found in labor contracts and some of his analysis. This contract features a number of different aspects. One is the GWI, and there's already been some discussion of that, and that was a pretty heavy focus of Finance. But there are also other provisions, such as steps and healthcare contribution. While we discuss those, we really focus primarily on GWI and two aspects of it. One, how did we compare to other towns in Connecticut? And second, what did we think would be the outcome if we were to arbitrate this contract for the town? Mr. Spilo presented to us, and he presented a Monte Carlo simulation. Essentially, he asked the labor negotiators what they thought the probability was of each of the various negotiable items breaking our way or breaking against us, and using that data and taking that data as, he was not aware of anybody contradicting that data. His analysis showed that we would get material benefit out of arbitrating the contract. The Board of Education weighed in on the other side and said that their analysis showed that they would not get, that the town would not get a material benefit from arbitration. But they could not share their data or assumptions with us. They said that that was because of confidentiality concerns. So we had kind of two different approaches and some of the data, but not all of the data. After a substantial back and forth, members of, one member of the committee proposed that we postpone this item indefinitely. As mentioned earlier, that would be the same thing as approving the contract or failing to reject it, and that was voted down 2-9-0 from Finance, so we thought that we should take it up. After a slightly more debate, item 15 was approved 6-2-3 with D1 absent, which means we approve rejecting this contract and bringing it to arbitration. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Blank, Chairwoman of our Education Committee.
Good evening. Your Education Committee met on October 17 to consider item 15, which is a three-year contract with the GEA. At our meeting, we had several people to present and answer questions, including Kathleen Stowe, Christina Downey, and Jonathan Budd from the Board of Ed, Mike Spilo from LCC, Mike Mason, Head of Labor Relations, and Lilian Perone, Head of the GEA. We covered the key details of the contract, which Mr. Spilo has circulated. The total cost of the contract, including increased benefits costs, is estimated to be $408 million. This is a cumulative 15% increase in costs over the three-year period. The Board of Ed's portions of labor costs, which doesn't include the healthcare costs, will go up roughly 4% each year of the contract. Ms. Stowe said that the Board of Ed approved this contract with a 5-3 vote. She said the majority assessed that the town would likely do worse in arbitration, given the inflationary environment. While they recognize that this contract will create budgetary challenges, they are concerned that rejecting it could cost the town more money and create even greater budgetary challenges. Mr. Spilo gave a presentation on behalf of the LCC. In his presentation, he said that Greenwich teachers are the highest paid in the state, test scores have declined, and GEA compensation has significantly outpaced inflation over the past 20 years. He also showed a model estimating the potential benefits or cost to the town of going to arbitration. His model estimates a potential benefit or cost in either direction of up to $7 million. He said that the LCC voted to reject the contract because they do not, in part because they do not believe it is a time to reward teachers. We had a broad discussion regarding the contract. Many members took exception to the view that this wasn't a time to reward teachers. They recognized teachers as important and very hardworking, often beyond their contracted hours. We discussed the ramifications of this contract for the Board of Ed budget, given the 2.9% guideline from the BET, which is significantly below next year's labor cost increase of 4.1%. Some members were concerned about the cuts that the Board of Ed might have to make. Other members said they didn't believe that teachers should have to bear the burden of the town's budgetary policies in this contract. We also discussed the potential outcomes of arbitration. One member raised the concern about going to arbitration during a period of growing inflation. Another member thought that the fact that GEA increases have historically significantly outpaced inflation could be favorable to the town. We also discussed the difficulties presented, because Greenwich is always the first town in the state to negotiate its teacher contract. We discussed ways to break this pattern, including negotiating a longer contract or amending the town charter. We voted to not reject this contract with a vote of 2-9-1. District 7 and 11 voted to reject, and District 10 abstained. Those who did not want to reject the contract gave the following reasons. Some said they believed that we have amazing teachers who deserve these increases and that they feel this is a fair contract. They don't think teachers should bear the burden of the BET's low-mill rate policies. Some do not think it is wise to reject because they do not believe that the town will do better in arbitration. One member was concerned that rejecting the contract could exacerbate teacher shortages and our ability to attract teachers. The members who voted to reject this contract believe that it will lead to significant cuts to the Board of Education's budget that will negatively impact students. They believe that a lower increase would be more reasonable, given that the GEA receives steady increases during previous periods of virtually no inflation. The abstention said they wanted additional time to consider all of the information. We also discussed whether to offer a motion to postpone indefinitely, as has been customary for labor contracts, which the body wants to allow to take effect without actually voting on them. We decided not to consider that motion, as members wanted the opportunity to either show support or reject this contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucia Jansen, Chair of the Budget Overview Committee.
Once again, your Budget Overview Committee took up this labor contract with review on the impact to the fiscal year '24 Board of Ed and town budgets and future years. The GEA teachers' contract is by far the largest labor contract the RTM approves. As already said by my peers, the contract value is $408 million, covering 955 employees, 55 of them are part-time. The new three-year contract is $37.9 million more than the last three-year agreement, driven primarily by the 2.5 wage increase and step increases, rising to 4.1% the first year, 3.9, and 3.9 the third year, amounting to $13.4 million more than the previous contract. Medical costs increased 12% fiscal year '24, 8% in year two and in year three. This increase in healthcare costs is mitigated by increasing employee premium cost share by 1% each year to 19.5% in the final year, 2025-2026. As the RTM analyzes this contract, it is essential to have as much information to examine, given the impact this contract has on the Board of Ed's operating budget, which ranges from 80% to 85% of the Board of Ed's budget. Unfortunately, when the Board of Ed sent the explanatory comment package to the RTM, crucially missing was the certified cost of contract, the redline agreement describing all the terms, plus the addendum salary schedules, and most importantly, peer benchmark information, which is one of the two primary criteria in arbitration cases. After the BOC's formal request to the school administration, the material was sent to the BOC a week later, which gave only a couple days of analysis before the BOC's meeting on October 13. The BOC hopes this was a one-time occurrence, and complete information will be sent in the future when the RTM call is sent out. All we heard, as we just heard with the Teamsters contract, both town and Board of Ed contracts are comprised of three components: wages, healthcare, and retirement costs. However, in many conversations with newer RTM members, many are not aware that the Board of Ed budget does not have the fastest-rising cost pieces in the Board of Ed budget. For example, the healthcare costs in this labor contract is, on the town's side, a fixed cost. Out of 169 towns, we are the only district where the Board of Ed does not carry in their budget the healthcare costs in the budget. In this contract, for example, in fiscal year '24, healthcare costs rise at 12% for a total of $22.9 million before employee premium cost share. The total healthcare cost over three years is $61.3 million. Again, this is all absorbed by the town fixed-cost budget. Finally, retirement costs are on the town's side fixed-cost budget of $4.9 million in this contract. The state also picks up the cost of the pension, the retirement costs, with the defined benefit plan. So through our income taxes, we pay for the wage increase that ripples directly to the retirement plan. Thus, in summary, of the 5.22% total of the fiscal year '24 increase in the GEA contract, the Board of Ed budget is responsible for 4.1 of the 5.22, while the town budget is responsible for the fastest-rising healthcare and retirement costs. The BOC was concerned with the 4.1 wages and step increase, given that the BET guidelines had been released with a limit of 2.9 increase in the Board of Ed budget. Given the math, it appears there are difficult choices that are likely that are going to have to be made that could impact children's program and services. It has been done in the past, in 2009. The BOC had invited both the LCC Chair and the Board of Ed Contract Liaison, Joe Kelly, and the new HR Director, Dr. Budd, to discuss the contract outcome. Mr. Spilo began by relaying the LCC's vote of 5-2-0 to reject the contract or to accept the rejection of the contract, and also gave a brief PowerPoint slide presentation highlighting the LCC's findings, including key negotiation points, competitive benchmark information, comparison to other town unions, and the rate of wage growth as compared to CPI. Mr. Spilo had also calculated the odds of a favorable arbitration outcome for the town. This calculation was not fully understood by some BOC members, and some members felt more analysis was needed before this would be accepted. Following Mr. Spilo's presentation, Joe Kelly and Dr. Budd responded to Spilo's presentation, as well as answered questions from the BOC. Mr. Kelly gave an overview of the Board of Ed negotiation process and how they came to the settled outcome. He indicated the teachers' union representatives had initially requested a 10% wage increase, followed by an 8% and a 6% wage increase in year two and three. Some BOC members were concerned and disappointed with the contract outcome and felt the town may lose in arbitration, and the outcome could be more costly if we lost key expensive terms. They also did not want to send a message to the teachers that we did not appreciate their work effort. However, other members remained dissatisfied with the outcome, given that the teachers entered the negotiations far out earning their teachers' peers, including Gold Coast towns and District Reference Group A, which is Fairfield County, and higher than our own town union contracts. Further, despite the highest wages in the state, teachers also receive the rich point-of-service state healthcare plan versus the high deductible plans that most of the other towns offer, and contribute the smallest portion to the employee cost share, rising only 1% per year, at a time when healthcare cost is increasingly rapid growing. There was also concern the impact of 4.1 wages would have on the Board of Ed operating budget programs and services. The BOC voted to accept the rejection, 7-4-0. District 4, 6, 8, and 12 voted against, and District 5 was absent. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our committee reports. I do believe we have one motion related to this item, which is going to be a motion from District 8 to postpone indefinitely. Ms. Cheryl Moss, Chair of District 8.
Good evening. District 8 moves to postpone indefinitely, item 15.
Thank you. That being offered on behalf of a committee does not require a second debate on the motion to postpone item 15 indefinitely. Yes. Yes. Okay. That's a good question. So on the District 8 motion to postpone indefinitely... So on the District 8 motion to postpone indefinitely, we have 14 speakers, 11 of whom are speaking in favor of the District 8 motion, and three are opposed. And then if we get through that, and that motion fails, and we had to take up the actual item up or down, there are 21 people, of which, I haven't done the full math, but I would say about 16 are duplicates from the previous speaker list. Yes. Ms. Fahey, please come to the podium. Susan Fahey, Chair of District 11.
I was going to make a motion to limit debate to three minutes. There's a lot of twos out there, so you might want to get somebody else to make a different For three minutes. Well, somebody else make a different motion, it's fine.
Well, I haven't accepted it yet, so maybe you want to reconsider your motion.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to limit debate to two minutes.
Very good. All right. Well, we have to get, let's get the details here. So, wait a minute, wait, wait, wait. Before you do that, so you're making a motion to limit debate to two minutes. Is it two minutes per speaker per motion, or is it two minutes per speaker per item? The difference being, if it were two minutes per speaker per motion, somebody could speak for two minutes on the District 8 motion, and then if that failed, come back for two minutes on 15.
That's fine.
Well, she's only offering, I'm not pushing her that much.
Speaker per motion.
Okay. So, and are you allowing for the principal, the proponent and the principal opponent to be determined by the moderator? How much time are you?
Sure, give them five.
Okay. So the motion, the motion you have before you is, is there a second? Well, the motion you have before you is two minutes per speaker per item, with the... All right, two minutes per speaker per motion, with the opponent, principal opponent to be determined by the moderator, to get five minutes, as well as the proponent. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay. The motion to limit debate is not itself debatable and requires a 2/3 majority to pass. So, this is when having clickers would be really, really helpful, because half of you are here and half of you are online. So Catherine Lebalbo, you and I are going to count people here, and if people online could raise their hand. So, in the room, if you want to limit debate, please raise your hand, we're going to count you. And also, online, if you want to limit debate. Craig, can you give us that number? Hang on.
All right, wait, 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 I got to count this section.
It's going up a little bit.
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18. Brooks, what have you got?
20.
I've got 20 in that section.
I've got 20 there.
Okay, all those opposed to limiting debate, please raise your hand, also online.
Okay. Can you tell people online to make, because I had to lower all the hands?
Okay. So if everyone online who wants to, who opposes limiting debate, could please raise your hand now, that would be great. I didn't count anybody over there, Catherine, yet, if there's anybody in that section. Okay, so the vote on the motion to limit debate, those in favor, 131, opposed 18, that motion is carried. So for the balance of the meeting, speakers will have two minutes per motion, with the principal opponent receiving five minutes, and the proponent receiving five minutes as well. So off to the races we go. Our first speaker on this item is James Waters. Oh, Craig, can you put up a two-minute clock when we use it? James Waters, to be followed by Janet McMahon. I'm just letting you know, it's a very unbalanced list. You're going to hear multiple people going 4-4-4, then an against, then 4-4-4, then an against. So James Waters, to be followed by Janet McMahon. You each have two minutes, wait for your, not five, no, no. Okay, there you go.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening, fellow members. As a GPS parent, member of the BOC and Finance Committee, I urge you to postpone indefinitely. Regardless of your views on our schools, our consideration of this item boils down to the one thing: whether we'll bet the farm on an arbitration that most agree won't go our way. Having heard the reports from labor contracts in the Board of Ed and spoken with lawyers involved in arbitration, rejecting this contract and going to arbitration is a risky gamble at a bad time. Let's set a few things straight. First, our teachers are well-paid, better than most in Connecticut, but in line with neighboring towns in Westchester. We pay to attract the best in the area, and not to have them leave for Rye or Chappaqua during a national teacher shortage. Second, I was saddened to see the misinformation comparing teacher pay to police and firefighters. That analysis hinged on poor assumptions that ignore that teachers have advanced degrees, says teachers don't work a minute longer than the school day, and ignores that police and firefighters earn overtime. This fails the sniff test and would be refuted by any GPS APSTAT student. Third, our schools aren't immune to COVID learning loss experienced across the nation at public and private schools alike. However, the data definitively shows that our schools' elementary and middle school SBA achievement results are back to pre-COVID levels in math and language arts. There is more to do, but our teachers are helping us get back on track. Let's be honest, our record in arbitration is terrible. That's before we consider inflation, which arbitrators certainly will factor in today. LCC wants us to bet on saving $0 to $3 million total over three years, less than 0.7% of the cost of contract, to ignore inflation and to expect an arbitrator will want to save wealthy Greenwich relative pennies.
Janet McMahon, to be followed by Sheryl Moss, who is being recognized as the proponent of this on behalf of District 8. Is Janet McMahon here?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, you have two minutes.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Moderator, members of the RTM and guests. I urge you to vote yes to the District 8 motion to postpone item 15 indefinitely. First, just a point of clarification for our guests and anyone listening in tonight. Postponing indefinitely does not mean we are killing the teachers' contract. It just means we're killing the item and effectively allowing the GEA contractor proceed in 30 days without formally taking a vote on the contract's merits. This practice was the status quo for the last few years I was on the RTM, and was actually devised by our own BOC, since they believed that the practice of voting a contract up or down could hurt future labor negotiations. I made this motion in my district because I believe that most people on the RTM want to act in the best interests of the town, while balancing the need for excellent public schools, which can only be accomplished by hiring and retaining quality teachers. If we go to arbitration, we risk not losing only millions of taxpayer dollars, but potentially teachers as well. Mr. Spilo asks us whether this is the right time to give teachers a raise. I would actually argue that there is no better time than the present, when inflation is at a 40-year high of 8.2%, and Social Security benefits, which our teachers do not receive, increase to an unprecedented 8.7% in response. If not now, when? Is it any coincidence how our district remained mostly unscathed from the nationwide teacher shortage? While it is true that no one goes into teaching for the money, teachers have certainly left because of it. Competitive pay equals teacher retention. It's not rocket science. A word about the Monte Carlo simulation. I have deep reservations about a model created by one individual, which does not include many assumptions due to confidentiality and/or hypothetical ones, such as an inflation rate of only 2% for 2023. In closing, if you believe that this contract was negotiated and mediated in good faith by the town and Board of Education, vote yes to postpone indefinitely. If you believe that this contract is fair, that teachers are not immune to the volatile economy...
Thank you very much. Sheryl Moss, to be followed by Kimberly Blank. And Ms. Moss, you have five minutes. Craig, if you can put five on the clock for her, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Moderator, fellow members of the RTM and guests. District 8 unanimously voted to move that the RTM postpone indefinitely, item 15, thereby allowing the teacher contract to go into effect without voting on the item directly. The rationale being that we can let the contract go into effect without affecting future negotiations. This is a mechanism devised by the BOC back in 2015, which the RTM has been using ever since. There's been some discussion about forcing the BOA to go to arbitration over this contract. I would like to spend a few moments to tell you why that is not a good idea. Arbitration looks at a town's ability to pay and inflation, and we all know these factors are not favorable for Greenwich. Even if Mr. Spilo's figure of 2.3% inflation were correct, this means teachers' salaries are increasing only slightly above that figure. However, as the BET and BOC have pointed out, inflation is much higher. The general wage increase is 2.5%. The rest of the cost of the contract is from teachers moving up a step, with about half the teachers already at the highest step, thus giving them only a 2.5% increase in salary. If you think this means our teachers are getting a deal that is too rich, please know that Fairfield County comparable towns are trending higher than Greenwich, which, again, will not favor us in arbitration. As for district performance, it was even reported today in The New York Times that test scores dropped nationwide, but in Greenwich, we were fortunate to get our students back in person and in a hybrid format before many other schools, which is why our students' performance dropped less than most other schools. Finally, as with the much-discussed Monte Carlo simulation, when I hear Monte Carlo, my mind immediately sees gambling tables in a casino. Are we being asked to gamble with taxpayer funds on a nearly nonexistent chance of saving $670,000 in a best-case scenario?
She has five minutes, that's a mistake. Keep going.
While risking nearly $2.5 million or more? I'd like to take anyone who votes against postponing indefinitely to Mohegan Sun and see how you do. We were not elected to gamble with taxpayer money. The contract was negotiated with representation by our excellent counsel, and all the town personnel in the room participated in the discussions about the proposals and offers. Please don't gamble because you think the contract is too rich for our teachers. We do not pay excessively more than other towns, and our students are receiving an excellent education. Voting to postpone indefinitely allows us to safely let the contract go into effect without having any ill effects on future negotiations. At the end of the day, how confident are you that we will get a significantly better deal? Personally, I am not willing to place that bet, as the odds are not in our favor. Please vote yes to postpone.
Thank you. Kimberly Blank, to be followed by Joan Thackor.
Kim Blank, I'm speaking for myself and not on behalf of the Education Committee. I'm opposed to this motion to postpone indefinitely. When we started using this procedure, there was some view that it showed a bit of protest about the contract, but at this point, it's become so routine that I doubt it sends any kind of a message. In this case, I want to take a straight vote on the contract, and I think you should too, whether or not you actually support the contract. If you don't like the contract, you should clearly reject the motion to postpone. There appears to be enough opposition to this contract that an actual vote is likely to have a significant number of votes to reject, and this will send a much more powerful signal than postponing indefinitely. If you do like this contract, I hope you will also reject the motion to postpone. I don't think we should use procedural techniques to prevent the body from expressing its views. If you are afraid that the RTM might actually reject the contract, then you may be using this procedural roadblock to prevent the majority from prevailing. I would hope that we have enough respect for democratic norms not to do this. There's probably a large third group, which is undecided, and I get it, because this is a really tough call. You may not love this contract, but you don't want to take chances in arbitration. But we were elected to sometimes make the tough calls, and I ask each of you to do that tonight. I think it's telling that none of the committees that considered this item voted to postpone indefinitely. There were enough strong feelings on both sides that people wanted a chance to express them through a vote. This is our biggest contract for our biggest part of the budget. It is a big deal for our town with a lot at stake. Let's take an actual vote on it. Please vote no on the motion to postpone.
Thank you. Joan Thackor, to be followed by Scott Kalb. If you could unmute yourself, Ms. Thackor.
Good evening, Madam Moderator and members of the RTM. In Connecticut, arbitrators handling public education arbitration cases are mandated to give priority to only two factors when considering arbitration awards: the public interest and the financial capability of the town within the school district, or our ability to pay. So look, some may think that this contract is too rich, too stingy, or just right, but that's really not what's at issue here. What's at issue is whether this, making this decision before us, is a risk we're willing to take on, and the likelihood of our success. And I don't like risking other people's money, especially our neighbors, when I believe especially that the probability of success is particularly slim, especially right now. As others have said, our teachers carried an extraordinary burden during the pandemic, and contrary to what some would have you believe, they came back right after the break in 2020, that March, and provided remote learning to our students. And the following start of the next school year, our elementary schools and middle schools were back in person full-time, and our high school was hybrid. So I want to clarify that. And our arbitrators will take notice of that if it goes to arbitration. They'll also note our rising cost of living and spiraling inflation. So if there was any time to take a gamble and go to arbitration, I submit that now is not that time. And if we fail in arbitration, that will be on us as the RTM, because our experts, our negotiators have told us this is a fair deal and that we should take it.
Thank you very much. Scott Kalb, to be followed by Hector Arzeno.
Don't start the clock yet. Okay, you can start. I urge you to support the teachers' contract by voting yes to postpone indefinitely, or no to reject the contract. Let me start by just referring to something that most lawyers know about, but you may not. It's called the Daubert, the Daubert Standard, which was passed by the Supreme Court, and it helps to set rules on whether or not expert witness testimony can be admitted into evidence. Why am I bringing this up? Because we are sort of besieged, the way the courts were, with unproved theories and unsubstantiated conclusions that I don't think would be admitted as expert witness or testimony. Let me give you some examples. I have never, in my experience, heard of a Monte Carlo simulation being used to determine the outcome of a labor negotiation. That's junk science. I have never heard of trying to consider the righteousness of a payment metric by comparing teachers' pay with policemen's pay, fireman's pay, legal assistants' pay. Why not compare it with a lawyer's pay, a doctor's pay, a banker's pay? Junk science. What about comparing our teachers' pay with other regions in Connecticut? Sure, that's reasonable, but what about neighboring towns in Westchester whom we compete with for talent? Junk science. Junk science again. We've also been given performance metrics. Those performance metrics do not include other studies, which actually cast our teachers in a better light. Junk science. We've been told that inflation's not a concern for teachers. I don't understand that one. Finally, we've somehow been given the idea that giving our teachers a COLA increase is a reward. This is nonsense. It seems to be grounded in some kind of conviction that we should pay our teachers as little as possible.
Time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Hector Arzeno, to be followed by Josh Brown.
Good evening, good evening, Madam Moderator. I rise to speak in favor of the motion to indefinitely postpone. I attended both the LCC and Finance meetings, and I voted against rejections of the contract. Neither committee overwhelmed me or unanimously voted to reject the contract, five in LCC and just six in Finance. In both committees, members independently concluded that the sensitivity analysis prepared only by one person held assumptions that not everyone shares. But more importantly, the legal advisor of the Board of Education believes that it is a fair agreement with possibilities of losing ground in arbitration. If we do not indefinitely postpone and go to an arbitration, a panel will first evaluate our capacity to pay. Sending the contract to arbitration concedes our local control in negotiating this contract to a panel of arbitrators. With each percentage point we stand to lose in arbitration could cost taxpayers $1.3 million per year. In arbitration, inflation will work against us. I would like to see this contract, which provides fair and reasonable salary and benefit adjustments to our educators and ultimately lets them return to what's important, a focus on doing the hard work of educating our students. Please join me to vote yes to indefinitely postpone the item. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh Brown, to be followed by Lucia Jansen.
Good evening, Madam Moderator, fellow members and guests. Josh Brown, District Four. I'm asking you to vote in favor of postponing indefinitely or, when we get to it, if we get to it, no to reject. I believe that the elements of the contract are a tad maybe too rich. There are a number of elements or paragraphs of the contract that were amended that were more favorable, I'm going to call it, to teachers that were against some of the things that we were hoping to see. But I was the one that, in LCC, made the motion to postpone indefinitely. And the rationale was when I asked about the objectives and goals of the Board of Education going into the contract process, there was not a clear articulated one, two, three, or the things that we want to accomplish. It was, well, we're kind of thinking of this, and we were kind of thinking of that, and maybe it was GWI. In prior experience, the Board of Ed showed up with very clear articulated expectations about what they were going to be going after as part of their negotiations. And we didn't get that at all in our discussion. It was very kind of, well, we kind of rolled the dice, and we kind of went with this, and we went with that. Those are my words. So I'm asking you to vote to postpone indefinitely because I'm very concerned that if we do reject the contract, it goes to the Board of Education Negotiating Committee to then put forward their premise. And considering the experience that we had in this negotiation, I'm not really quite sure that we want to do that. And going back to the previous speakers that made very good points about the rationale, you know, a Monte Carlo simulation, that's some rocket science in there that really nobody understands very well. Much of the facts and figures Mr. Spilo put forward are credible in certain ways. But some of the outcomes, it's not a reward for our teachers. It's acknowledging the service that they do. Vote yes.
Lucia Jansen, to be followed by Jonathan Perlow.
I am speaking tonight as an individual on this item. This contract has very serious consequences to the Board of Ed and town budget and deserves an up or down vote. The postponement indefinitely parliamentary procedure has lost all meaning over time. I urge you to reject postponing indefinitely and have the contract go into effect. The reason is that in addition to the RTM call information, the RTM body received a lot of new information on Friday afternoon, October 21, from the Board of Ed's new HR Director, Dr. Budd, with teacher settlements. We are now up to 11 settlements, if you include all the reports sent to the RTM. However, none of those settlements are considered our direct peers in Gold Coast, Fairfield County. Greenwich sets the pace for the 63 subsequent contracts. Unlike a previous speaker, benchmarked peers, in addition to ability to pay, are the two primary criteria that the arbiters review. Based on the data provided in comparative benchmark data provided by Dr. Budd, it clearly shows that Greenwich teachers going into the contract earn the highest in wages and lowest contribution in healthcare contribution, even with the various high-wage settlements from the 11 towns that have submitted. Further, based on Dr. Budd's data, Stanford, our direct abutting neighbor town, pays significantly less than Greenwich. For example, at the top master's sepp, where 95% of teachers have a master's or higher, we pay $12,262 more or 11.8% difference. Further, with the exact state healthcare plan, Stanford pays 19% to our 16.5%. Dr. Budd also confirmed in email that Westchester is not where we get our teachers. If you look at the data, 1% of Greenwich teachers come from Westchester.
Thank you.
I urge you to vote against the postponement indefinitely.
Jonathan Perlow, to be followed by Christina Downey.
Thank you, Madam Moderator and fellow RTM members. I am speaking in favor of the motion to postpone consideration of item 15, the GEA contract. I would like to respond to some of the arguments made to oppose the contract. The economic situation is indeed volatile, and while many economists expect a recession, what's on Americans' minds right now is inflation, which, as everyone knows, is at a 40-year-high. Voters elect the Board of Ed. If they are dissatisfied with its performance on labor, contract negotiations, or other matters, they can vote in new members. I trust that they were diligent in negotiating the contract. While the contract may be above the expectations of the town and the BET, we have historically squeezed the school budget in order to keep our taxes low. I don't agree with that approach. The notion that teachers only work during the day is an affront to the vast majority who devote countless hours to preparing lessons, grading papers, speaking with parents, and more. The investigation of one GPS administrator by four different authorities, no less, has nothing to do with this contract. And the most important point, the past few years have indeed been very difficult for our children. And as the New York Times reported on its front page today, test scores are down around the nation. This is not a Greenwich problem. It's a national problem. It's also been extraordinarily difficult for educators, who not only went above and beyond to meet their responsibilities in an unprecedented situation, they put their own health at risk as frontline workers, while many of them cope with the challenges confronted by their own kids, just like so many of the rest of us. For all these reasons, I'm in favor of the GEA contract. By voting for this motion, I am doing my part to recognize the heroic efforts of GPS educators, who by rights should get most of the credit for Greenwich ranking among the best school districts in the state. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Christina Downey, to be followed by Joe Kelly, who will be speaking in his capacity as the Chair of the Negotiating Committee.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening, everyone. Christina Downey on the Board of Education. I am one of the members of the negotiating committee, but I am speaking as an individual tonight. I'm also the Chair of the Policy Governance Committee. Some of you made reference to hearing myself and Kathleen Stowe, our Chair, at the Finance and Education meetings on this issue. I just want to be clear. You know, the process was followed the way it has been in the past. This is my second year on the Negotiations Committee. We had the Administrator's Contract last year. We had participation from the various town bodies, the BET, the Town's Labor Negotiator, and the LCC in the room with us. There were numerous meetings, many hours spent together over the summer, which also included our outside counsel. At the end of it all, the Board of Ed members on the Negotiating Committee agreed that this agreement before you was a fair agreement in light of all the factors that an arbitrator or an arbit- panel of arbitrators would consider. We believe there's substantial risk to the town in arbitration of a worse outcome of what's presented here. And that decision was not made lightly. It was made after hours of discussion with those town colleagues and the guidance of our respected outside counsel. I'll leave it to Joe to give you a little bit more flavor, and Dr. Budd can give some more of the specifics. But I think it's dangerous that there's-- it's very easy to get caught up in a lot of the noise and distractions and a lot of facts and figures thrown around. But the reality is, as other speakers have said, the issue before you is simply this. It's looking at this agreement in terms of the potential cost to the town in the event we lose in an arbitration and what risk you're prepared to take. It was our belief that the arbitrated agreement was not-- we would not do significantly better in arbitration and could very well do much worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Kelly, to be followed by Mike Spilo.
Madam Moderator, do I get five? Yes, did you get five? Thank you. Okay, great. Thank you.
Well, no. My understanding was is that you were--
If two is okay, too, I'll just talk--
My understanding was is that you are only taking two.
That's fine. Two is enough. RTM, hello. Good evening. I'm going to go over the process. Process was, we met with the attorney we've had or retained for 15 years in labor negotiations, Tom Ooni. Tom Ooni has also written the book literally on labor negotiations in the state of Connecticut. He's a Yale graduate. He's a Harvard Law School graduate. He is very, very good at what he does. He's been doing it for over 40 years. Before we started negotiating, I asked him, where do we think the arbitrator will land this contract? He said GW-- pardon me. GWI of 2.5, and we should-- they probably will-- a contribution to the insurance of 1% per year. So that's where we knew our goal was. We had to try to do better than that. We went through the process. We did not narrow the gap between the GEA and the Board of Education and our committee. So we hired a mediator to help us negotiate. The mediator looks at the process through the lens of an arbitrator. The mediator, after a 10-hour marathon evening, came up with 2.5 GWI he suggested we settle at. He told that to both sides, and a 0.5% contribution to insurance. That was the mediator. The mediator looked it through the eyes of the arbitrator. So neither side agreed to those terms. We were not at the further negotiations. We went down to the zero arrow with the GEA. GEA came to us with a 2.5 GWI and a 1% contribution. That was their final number. I went to our attorney. I said, hey, we did not do better than our projections. So therefore, what should we do? He recommended we take or agree to those terms to settle. I went to all the members and discussed with all the members of the committee, and the two Board of Ed members agreed that we should go forward with that settlement. I recommended it, so the three of us agreed, and those were the voting members. There was two BET members there. Each of them, we split. One BET member supported it. One did not support it. And we had the superintendent, and Jonathan Budd will be speaking shortly, who also agreed to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Spilo, to be followed by the final speaker on this item, Jonathan Budd.
Can I get five minutes?
Is Jonathan Budd the primary opponent for this?
No.
No? And who are you representing as the primary opponent in LCC? You could--
Okay.
Go with two minutes.
Go with two minutes. There's so much misinformation flying around. Inflation is projected at 2.3%. The average increase in this contract is 4.2%. The highest is 16%. Gosh, it's hard to know where to go. The arbitration is-- takes two, as Lucia said, takes two things into account: comparable towns and ability to pay with respect to inflation. They look at the trailing 36-month average, which is 4.4%, so inflation won't be a factor. We don't compete with Westchester. Unions were responsible for a lot of the school closures throughout the country, also here. Greenwich was 71st in terms of the amount of time in-person learning. I guess you guys didn't do your homework, or at least the people didn't. The negotiation process was broken, totally broken. The outcome was not in line with any goals because there weren't any goals. The BOE didn't set any goals. They didn't-- they refused to discuss with us. We're supposed to believe that we can't do any better based on the word of the attorney, who oversaw the last 20 years of outrageous pay increases, 2.5% above the next highest-- above CPI per year, and 1% above the next-- the state average per year. And this guy is the one who's telling us we can't do any better. Obviously, he doesn't do very well for us. Our children deserve high-quality education. No doubt about that. However, it's well-known that in town, parents augment education. They step in with tutors. This happens in other towns as well. Many of the teachers-- I'm going to be out of time. But this impacts other towns negatively because it draws money into-- away from other towns. It draws money away from other towns and makes it more difficult for them to compete in the teacher market, which is why Hartford--
Thank you, Mr. Spilo.
Hartford has 90 teachers missing.
Thank you. Jonathan Budd, Chief of the Board of Education's Human Resources Department. And he's our final speaker on this item.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Jonathan Budd, and I serve since July 1 of this year as Chief Human Resources Officer for the Greenwich Public Schools, in which role I participated in the teacher negotiations process, which includes my brief remarks to you this evening. Respecting your potential difference of opinion on this issue, I am here this evening to speak on behalf of the Greenwich Public Schools to endorse the three-year contract made between the Greenwich Board of Education and the Greenwich Education Association, and to therefore encourage you to support postponing indefinitely action to reject the contract or encourage you to oppose rejecting the contract. The guidelines for teacher negotiation, as you know, are set forth in state statute, specifically the Connecticut Teacher Negotiations Act. In terms of language changes from the current agreement, various language changes advantageous to the Board of Education were attained, and most language changes were seen by the Board of Education and the GEA as mutually advantageous. Ultimately, the language and salary and insurance adjustments were seen as appropriate and fair by the Board's Negotiations Committee in the face of the other option, which would have been arbitration in early September and which may have resulted in a settlement more financially favorable to the teachers. Previous and current consultation with Board's Negotiations Counsel suggests wisdom in not rejecting the contract settlement. A vote to reject would immediately move the parties into binding last-best offer arbitration. Since the parties reached agreement in early September, additional settlements across the state have come in, including five in Fairfield County, the latest two of which are above in salary total over three years the settlement reached here in Greenwich. One final note. Excellent public education, as I know you know, relies among many things on the strength of its teachers. And the strength of our teachers--
Thank you.
--is directly related to our ability to recruit, attract, and retain the best of the best. Thank you.
Okay. So that concludes our speaker list for the District Eight motion to postpone indefinitely. Does everyone understand what they're doing? Will the district tabulators please mark your voting cards? District Eight, motion to postpone indefinitely. If you want to dispose of this item without taking a vote on the merits of the item, thereby allowing the contract to go into effect after 30 days through state statute, you would vote yes. If you do not want to vote on the-- I'm sorry. If you do not want to dispose of this right now and you actually want to have a vote on the merits of the item, you would vote no. Is that clear? Is that clear? And it requires a majority to pass. Ladies and gentlemen, take your seats. The vote on the District 8 motion to postpone, those in favor, 100; those opposed, 101. Abstaining, 1. The motion has failed. All right. That brings us to item 15, as it appears on the call, and we do have a rather robust sign-up sheet. As Ms. Fahey has reminded us of two minutes, yes. So let me see if we can find it. Anticipating that, here we go. Okay. So now we are with many of the same people. Okay. Stephen Meskers, you are our first speaker on this item.
I urge acceptance of the contract. I think over the last four years, all I've seen is a ceiling collapsing in one school, sewage backing up an old Greenwich school, and hall, not hall monitors but wall monitors at Central Middle School. I think the infrastructure and the investment there is the first signal. The second signal, I think, is the investment in our teachers. I think it's essential that we send a signal that we support our teachers. You know, the culture wars are booming loud and clear across the entire country. I think our teachers are making extraordinary effort in a very difficult time. The, the test results on the, on the back of COVID are suffering, and, and that seems to be a reason for not paying them. That's akin to telling the policemen that crime is up and we should pay them less. I don't understand the logic of it. I think the contract is fair. I worked on Wall Street for 35 years. A 2.5% salary raise with steps in a period of over 8% inflation. I don't understand how we're losing out here. I don't understand how arbitration would benefit us. I urge acceptance of the contract.
Thank you. If I didn't already mention it, with Mr. Meskers going, we have 20 speakers left. It's not a particularly balanced list. It's, you know, 16 more people who are going to be speaking in favor of the contract and four people who are speaking opposed to it. So next up is Mr. Waters, James Waters, to be followed by Mary Flynn. Mr. Waters. Oh, and yes, as, as Mr. Brown has reminded me, as a holdover from the Governance Committee, Mr. Broadhurst might also agree with the sentiment. If you've already heard your comments, you might want to consider passing. Thank you.
I'll finish my remarks that I didn't get to finish. So LCC wants us to bet on saving $0 to $3 million total over three years. To ignore inflation, expect an arbitrator will rule in our favor to save us some pennies. Come on. Sadly, the Monte Carlo simulation we keep hearing about has very little, if no predictive value in this situation. The reality is arbitration is going to cost us more. That will cost us on other contracts negotiated this year. Rolling the dice, praying that arbitrators will save us 0.7% could easily cost us many millions. Please vote no and reject the rejection. This is the fiscally responsible thing to do. It supports our teachers too, and also says we expect more. It is consistent with how we have, this body has been behaving in focusing on fiscal responsibility. I would urge you to not make a fiscally irresponsible decision. Thank you. Please vote no.
Thank you. Mary Flynn to be followed by Cheryl Moss. Ms. Flynn?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, yes, okay. Thank you. So I would like to ask you to vote no as well. I agree with the two previous speakers. In a time where we have 8.2% inflation in the past 12 months, which where they're getting the 2.3% inflation, I don't know, but everything I've read says 8.2% inflation and the 8.7% Social Security increase, this contract is, is, if we went to arbitration, I can't imagine that we would do as well. Philadelphia just was awarded 14% in arbitration for their, their museum workers. But in this inflationary time, like, our job is to provide equal opportunity. And we live in a town where Brunswick just bought a $300 million property and is suing us to take it off the tax rolls so they can build housing for their teachers? So we have to take care of our teachers. We have to pay them enough so they have a living wage. We're not providing affordable housing, so, I mean, we should be doing that too. That would be quite helpful. We have a national teacher shortage. We're down for teachers. We need to support our teachers. They've kept our scores up higher than, than many other places, and they're doing a good job. There's, you know, of course, there's a couple of problems, but everybody does. So I urge you to support our teachers and to vote no to reject this contract and therefore put it in force. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl Moss, I understand you're passing on your time. Okay. Kim Blank to be followed by Joan Thackor.
Hi, Kim Blank, speaking as an individual, not for the Education Committee. As I said before, this is a tough call, but I think we should reject this contract. With a 2.9% guideline for next year and 4.1% increase in labor costs, this is a question of math. I don't see how the Board of Ed meets these guidelines without making real cuts, and I think this contract is going to hurt our students. I totally disagree with the idea that teachers somehow don't deserve this contract. As a society, I believe we underpay teachers. But while teachers in general may be underpaid compared to their societal value, teachers in Greenwich are not underpaid compared to other teachers. They have consistently been paid the most in the state of Connecticut. This contract was negotiated in a moment of high inflation. The inflation picture may look very different in six months or a year, and we are stuck with this contract for three years. I think that giving outside increases because of inflation is not right because there have been years and years of virtually no inflation where teacher pay has continued to rise well in excess of inflation. It seems to me that you can't have it both ways. Either you have steady rates of increase without regard to inflation, or you peg your increases to inflation. In this case, the teachers would be getting both. I know that it's a gamble, and it's not one that I would take lightly, but I'm hopeful that the arbitrator will look at the facts as I do and see that Greenwich has been more than fair to its teachers over the past two decades in terms of providing steady increases. In my 15 years on the Education Committee, this is the first time I voted to reject a GEA contract. At some point, though, a contract's terms are so unfavorable that we need to be willing to take a chance and make our best case to the arbitrators. I think we've reached that point with this contract, and I will vote to reject it.
Thank you. Joan Thackor to be followed by... Joan Thackor, to be followed by Steve Rubin.
Yes, I'll finish my remarks from before.
Ms. Thackor, you are unmuted.
Hello?
Yes.
Yeah. Please don't be swayed by the argument that we can't afford this contract because our BET set budgetary guidelines at 2.9% for the schools, and that this contract is too rich for that. That argument speaks to our willingness to pay, not our ability to pay. Please don't conflate the two. The arbitrators will not be influenced by that argument, and we shouldn't be either. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Rubin, to be followed by Scott Calb.
Good evening, I'm Stephen Rubin, Vice Chair of the Education Committee, with nine years' experience on the committee, speaking as an individual. After four months of extensive negotiations, we have been presented with a fair contract that needs to be approved. The BOE voted to accept this contract, the Education Committee voted 9 to 2 to accept this contract. One of the dissenting votes on the LCC was a former Education Chair and former chair of the LCC who also voted for this contract. The Education Committee analyzed data that we know to be accurate and true. We were presented with a long and detailed analysis from LCC to justify rejecting the contract. The problem with their analysis is that the data was skewed. For example, it listed that teachers only work 1,400 hours a year based on the hours they are in classrooms. The figure, of course, neglects the fact that teachers work in their off-hours, grading papers and exams, researching lessons, creating lesson plans, conversing with parents and students, et cetera. There is a national shortage of teachers. It's going to get worse in the coming years. We are not immune to this problem. We currently have four unfilled positions, and we don't want that number to increase. Greenwich has several great attributes that attract new homeowners and retain long-term residents. One of the most important contributions to our real estate high values is our highly-ranked public education system. If our education rankings go down, so will our property values. If our property goes, values go down, our low mail rate will increase. The big question that you should be asking is why those who are most familiar with education in Greenwich have accepted the contract and why some individuals in RTM committees would like to squeeze the teachers' income.
Scott Calb, to be followed by Janet McMahon.
I'll be very quick. Look, I've worked as a teacher in the past. My son is a teacher currently, and so is my daughter. I can tell you that no one works harder for less pay by the hour than our teachers. It's a grueling job, and they deserve our support, not our scorn or rejection. Somehow, there seems to be a narrative that's crept into our town, that our public employees are overpaid and underworked, especially our teachers. But I urge you not to buy into this narrative. It's not who we are as a town, and it's not reality. Our teachers are the principal change agents in our kids' lives. They are literally on the front lines. I fail to see how cutting teachers' pay in real terms. In other words, not giving them an increase that matches inflation is actually a pay cut. Giving them an increase in line with inflation is not an increase, it's just keeping them where they are. I fail to see how cutting their pay in real terms would actually attract talent, will fill teaching vacancies, will make our schools better, or will solve a problem that we face as a nation in our education system, as we learned today. I urge you to keep the big picture in mind here and to support this contract. I do not think that this contract will be improved in arbitration. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet McMahon, to be followed by Lucia Jansen.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I'll, I agree with all the points that Scott just made, and I'll yield my time.
Thank you. Lucia Jansen, to be followed by Hector Arzeno.
I once again stand before you to accept the rejection of the GEA contract. Please vote yes to accept. I say we support the kids and not the union representative adults. Greenwich ranks at the top in 2022-23 wages, and with this new settlement, will increase the chasm with their peers. The GWY increase is not 2.5%. It is 4.1. For those who do not understand, MOC 100 in the budget includes wages, step, longevity pay, extracurriculars. This will be part of the cuts involved when the Board of Ed has to reach the 2.9% limit that the BET has established. We, with this approval, we are saying the adults are going to override the children, and that's what's going to be the outcome. I urge you to reject this contract. The numbers, the settlements, the fact that we're the first town that negotiates the contract, in essence, we're negotiating with ourselves. There is no other peer at this point. These settlements are not Fairfield County. We are the first in the 2022-23. Based on the data and Dr. Budd provided on the peer, we're number one in pay by far, with not only DRGA, DRGB, but those abutting neighbors who are in the urban districts. We can prevail on certain key terms, and even if we were to save a smaller amount in some of these terms per year, it could contribute towards keeping those essential programs and services. These children have had tremendous learning loss, and this is not the time to be cutting those programs and services. Thank you.
Hector Arzeno, to be followed by Frances Nobe.
Just a short comment. Greenwich is ranking number second in the state as a public school system, and I, I would like to, that if we can maintain that ranking, cutting our school budgets, cutting our public schools, not investing in our infrastructure, I don't think is the way to support our public school system, our teachers, and our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Frances Nobe, to be followed by Josh Brown. Is she online? No, okay, she might-
Wait, wait, hold on, PTAC president?
Maybe, I don't know. Okay, you can open it up and see if she's-
Unfortunately, the person who's, it's in, I can't allow them to talk, I'm gonna have to come up in the panel. I'm sorry, they're using an older version, so they're gonna be-
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Nobe, is that you?
Yes.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
Hi, this is Frances Wu Nobe, a mom of three Greenwich Public School kids, and also 2022-2023 president of PTAC Greenwich. PTAC's a nonpartisan umbrella organization formed by our 15 Greenwich Public Schools, and we advocate for and with our parents and teachers. Please join your school PTA today. PTAC draws your attention to approval of item number 15. This GEA contract was collaboratively developed with the involvement of representatives from various Town of Greenwich government branches, a representative from the BOE, and representatives of the GEA. This agreement was approved on a bipartisan vote in the BOE. PTAC supports this agreement. If the RTM does not approve this contract, it will force the contract to go into arbitration. That would take control of settling the teachers' pay and benefits, terms, and conditions away from the Town of Greenwich, and place that control with an independent, non-local, third-party arbitrator. No one wins in that scenario, and it creates distraction and risk for our teachers in our town. PTAC encourages dialogue and debate for the continuous improvement of our school district. We believe in the greatness of the Greenwich Public Schools, and know that our educational professionals work diligently to ensure that our kids are ready for the future, and the high quality of our school district, and the top-tier ratings that our school district gets from third-party evaluators ensures our homes remain highly valued. For all the educational professionals in the audience with listening on Zoom, thank you for educating our youth tomorrow's leaders. Thank you for all that you do each and every day. Please vote to approve this contract.
Thank you very much. Josh Brown, to be followed by Allison Walsh.
Madam Moderator, fellow members and guests, I urge you to vote no on this for many of the points that have already been made. I don't think we're going to be able to do much better in arbitration than what we have before us. Vote no.
Thank you. Allison Walsh, to be followed by Karen Kowalski. After Allison Walsh, Karen Kowalski, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, there's seven.
Good evening, everybody. I would urge you to vote no to reject the contract and to accept the contract. I know that during the pandemic, teachers worked overtime first to adjust to remote learning and having to do lessons on Zoom, then they had to adjust to hybrid learning and doing lessons simultaneously Zoom and live. I know an art teacher who got, ended up with an injury and surgery because she had to carry her art cart around Old Greenwich School during the pandemic, because they wouldn't let kids go into the art room, because then, if everybody had been in this one room, then, then, you know, COVID could be in that one room. I know that this is a very, very bad time to be sending a message that we don't appreciate teachers, to be rejecting this contract. And I think that we have to think seriously about what it says about us as a town. If we do reject this contract, and if, if we are, if you put yourself in the position of a teacher, and the town has rejected this contract and gone to arbitration, rather than just give you an increase, which might meet inflation and might slightly exceed inflation, you might really think strongly about moving to another district. It's, I personally think that as a, as a district, we're great at stochastic analyses and financial modeling, and we're really sort of short on gratitude. I think that we need to start thinking about the perspective of teachers. They can walk, and they will, and I, I think it's really important for us not to send that message right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Kowalski, to be followed by Molly Salivi.
Members of the RTM, my name is Karen Kowalski. I'm the Vice Chair of the Board of Ed. Typically, BOE labor contracts have unanimous, have unanimous support of our board, but this one before you was a bare majority, and that's not normal. I wanted to share with you why I voted against the GEA contract. The GEA contract is unprecedented. The 15% increase over the next three years does not compare to any increase we've seen for other unionized groups within or outside of Greenwich. This does not mean that some of our teachers don't deserve a raise, or that we should not raise teachers' salaries, but not to this extreme. The contract will cost this town $38 million over the next three years. The average pay will increase to $9,600 each for each, for every three years. There are very few industries that will receive this type, same type of increase over the next three years, and those of you in the business community know, you know this, and you're mistaken if you think otherwise. My biggest worry is that this contract will lead to fewer teachers in our kids' classrooms. We are already facing a big fiscal cliff when the ARPESR money runs out. Who will pay for the big budget increase to keep all of our current teachers affording these raises? I understand that teachers' union priorities are the rate of pay rather than the number of teachers employed, and maintaining all of our teachers is my number-one priority. We keep talking about inflation, but this contract does not go into effect until next year, and over the past 20 years, Greenwich teachers' pay has increased 48% above inflation per year through and including June of 2022. The increases that the teachers have already received account for the current inflation problems. Higher teacher pay will not lead to better performance, but instead to poor performance and layoffs. Teacher pay is entirely based on years of experience and advanced degrees, and I strongly suggest that you look at our current academic achievements and know that paying teachers more money doesn't solve our problem. We need to focus on the problems at hand, and this contract should-
Time, thank you very much.
Our children and community deserve a more responsible spending for the improvement of our education.
Thank you very much. Ms. Kowalski, thank you very much. Molly Salivi, to be followed by Jonathan Perlo.
I urge you to vote no to reject. I find all these conversations hackneyed, very tiresome, and a real insult to the schoolchildren of this town.
Jonathan Perlo, to be followed by Christina Downey. I'm sorry, Perlo's passing and Downey's passing. That brings us to our final three speakers. Jonathan Budd of the Board of Education, Chief of Human Resources. To be followed by Michael Spilo.
Thank you very much. I know it's a long night for everybody. I ended before by stressing probably a more philosophical argument about how our teacher salary structure, in fact, our entire contract allows us to recruit, attract, and retain the best of the best. And you may legitimately say tonight that you think a less robust or a less rich teacher contract would also allow us to retract and recruit, attract, and retain. I would, I would respect that, but I would like to amplify the point I made in the previous paragraph before that, because at the end of the day, whether you agree with that philosophy, I would ask you to think practically, and to repeat just two sentences from what I said before. Previous and current consultation with Board Negotiations Council suggests wisdom in not rejecting the contract settlement. A vote to reject would immediately move the parties into binding last best offer negotiation, arbitration. And since the parties reached agreement in early September, avoiding that arbitration deadline at the last moment, since that time, additional settlements across the state have come in, including five in Fairfield County. And the latest two are above, in salary total, over three years, the settlement reached here in Greenwich. So the comparables are, our Greenwich three-year total is 12.63%. Over the past three weeks, the two settlements that have come in in Fairfield County are 13.45% and 13.68%. And whereas our teacher insurance contribution is going up 3% over three years, in both of those districts, the increase is going up only 2% over three years. We have been advised by council as recently as today that we do stand to attain a less favorable settlement to the town in arbitration at this point, and I would encourage against taking that risk. Thank you very much, whatever your vote.
Thank you very much. Mr. Spilo, to be followed by our final speaker, Joe Kelly. Now, Mr. Spilo, this is where you get your five minutes.
Thank you.
He's entitled to it, and Joe Kelly gets five, principal proponent and opponent.
Okay. Think about this. All the people who are in favor of limited, unlimited spending on education, including the GEA president at the back of the room, want us to vote against arbitration-
Please, no pointing, okay?
Sorry, shouldn't point, at the back of the room. And, and they want you to believe that-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, wait a minute. We are respectful in this room, so you may not, I'm sorry, I do not, please don't do that, okay? If you can't abide by our rules, I will ask you to step out while the speaker is speaking. Mr. Spilo, you have the floor.
Can I start over?
No, just go.
All right, well, all the people who are in favor of limited, unlimited education spending, including the GEA president, want us to vote against arbitration, and they want you to believe that you should vote against arbitration, because we will lose and end up spending more on education. Does that make sense to you? Doesn't make sense to me. I think they're concerned that we will win and spend less on education. As it stands, we are paying $14 million a year more than the next highest-paying town. The negotiations process was broken. The outcome was not in line with goals, because there weren't any goals, and we're supposed to believe that we can't do any better based on the word of an attorney, not a financial guy, who oversaw 20 years of the highest pay increases in the state. As parents, we tend to think that no price is too high to pay for our children's education. The teachers' union is hap- The teachers' union is happy to agree. To that end, the teachers' union negotiates contracts in favor of the teachers with no regard for accountability, outcome, or economic environment. Any questions asked are met with accusations of you are against schools. Our children deserve a high-quality education, and it's a well-known fact that often where teachers fall short, parents step in with tutors and extra spending and extra coaching. In fact, many of our teachers are paid tutors after school. But there are many families in Greenwich and outside of Greenwich who do not have the luxury of paying for tutors. They depend on teachers in the schools for their children's academics. In situations where there is a foolproof system of employment for life with the highest pay in the profession and guaranteed annual raises with no accountability, what we create is an environment of complacency, an environment where mediocrity is consistently rewarded. Teachers benefit, but students don't. This is most true for low and moderate-income students and families. As we also know, the teachers' union has propagated requirements which have not put our children's welfare first. Test scores have declined as a direct result, and this is not the time to send the message that everything is hunky-dory. We need to reject this contract, both because it is the right message to send and because it's the wrong amount to pay in this circumstance. And let the union have another try in focusing on the students and the outcomes. Again, if you have any doubt that we can win arbitration, the president of the GEA is here to allay them. If she felt the GEA could do better in arbitration, she would simply keep quiet.
Mr. Spiloe. Don't do that. Mr. Kelly, you are our final speaker.
I am it. Excellent. I tried to fit five minutes' worth of a presentation to two minutes before. Now I'll give you two minutes of a five-minute presentation to get us out of here quicker. I went into this negotiation 100% believing that we would kick this off to the arbitrators. I thought in this inflationary volatility that it would be saved from the ridicule of the town seeing an increase, significant increase, in the GWI. And I just passed it off to the arbitrator to say how easy this is just to let them figure it out. So I and our board doesn't have to take any grief from it. But the GEA decided to come down in their number, and they came down to a point where we actually had to consider it. I didn't want to have to make this decision. I did not, I am not making a decision right here based on whether I like teachers or I don't like teachers. I'm making a business decision here. I have, and for the last 40 years of my life, been a professional negotiator of deals. That's what I do for a living. I've been compensated quite well for that. I'm kind of good at it. And I used my sense of not taking an affiliation with either side. I was open and honest with everybody in the negotiation process. We had the BET, two members of the BET, in the room. Full dialogue. They could join in at any time and discuss anything they wanted to about the process. We spent between 30 and 40 hours together the entire summer, not the entire summer, but during the summer, 30 and 40 hours together with open conversation, open dialogue. We had, for the first time ever in the teachers' negotiations, we had one of your body invited in. We invited your body in, Mike Spiloe, into the meeting to actually listen and participate in the process. So this flawed negotiation process is confusing to me. We had the town labor negotiator involved in all the discussions we had in that meeting. We had our attorney, which I'm really shocked that people are undermining where he has such a good reputation. He's such a nice fella. I worked with him on the last negotiations with the building administrators. He was very helpful. We landed quite successfully. But the bottom line is, it was open discussion. It was sensible dialogue. It was all input from all the major representatives of the town. And it was the first time such an open discussion was held. And I wanted it to be transparent. I wanted it to be clear. I wanted everyone to contribute to the conversation. And as we progressed, or actually, we progressed rather slowly, and as I mentioned, which fails to be mentioned again, the arbitrator, I'm sorry, the mediator. The mediator looks at this through the eyes of the arbitrator. The mediator spent 10 hours listening to all the positions that one side had and listened to our positions. And they took a number that they thought would be, and this is two months ago, when the inflationary environment was slightly different than it is right now. It's deteriorated somewhat. Stock market was up 500 points or so today. When you have a bullish stock market, that doesn't mean we're going into recession. That doesn't mean the Federal Reserve is successful on controlling inflation. It means they're not able to control inflation. I don't want to give my opinion on that, but I do that professionally, but I won't talk about that. But the bottom line is, all the discussions were opened when we were given the 2.5 GWI as a point to make a decision on, when we were given the 1%, which was greater than the mediator, when we did a better-than-the-mediator present because he heard their side of the story. We heard people complaining about the insurance contribution that was not high enough. For some reason, the mediator, from the lens of an arbitrator, decided 0.5% per year was fair. That's what he suggested. We were not good with that. We held out for another half a percentage point. We got 1% on that. So the bottom line is, all this was discussed. It was a process that openly, everyone was openly discussing this. When we were down to the final offer, and we haggled with the GEA. We haggled hard with them. They were stuck at that position. They would not come lower. Only with one hour left, till we were bound to arbitration, did the GEA come in with the 2.5 and the 1%. And that's when I went around to all the participants. And some participants declined, some agreed. The ones that agreed, I mentioned last time. All of the Board of Education members agreed. They're the voting members. And they're the voting members. We talked to the BET. One BET member agreed to the 2.5 and the 1%. One disagreed. We had your RTM member disagreed. We had the superintendent agreed. We had Jonathan Budd agree. We had sort of a mixed response from our town negotiator. He said he wanted, he was okay with the 2.5 GWI, but wanted a much higher insurance contribution. So his response or his contribution was no. So basically, we had, the voting members all voted positive. We then put it to ratify it with the Board of Education. We had a vote which ratified and passed it forward. So that's how the process went. I fully expected not to have to decide this contract. But it got too close to a point where we had to manage.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. It's a very long evening, and we're coming to the end. So as a reminder, this resolution is worded to reject. Therefore, if you are in favor of rejecting the contract and sending it to arbitration, you would vote yes. If you do not want to reject the contract, meaning you want to approve the contract, you would vote no on item 15. Does everyone understand that? Okay. Will the district tabulators please mark your voting cards, item 15, and proceed to poll your delegation? And we will need to await the result of this vote before we can adjourn. Thank you. You ready for the big vote announcement? You all look like you're ready to go someplace. What happens if that doesn't happen? The vote for number 15, those in favor, 82; opposed, 110; abstaining, 2. That motion has failed. I wish you all a very happy Halloween. We look forward to using remote voting technology next month. Have a great night. Stand's adjourned.